Good morning. We were called this Tuesday, August 31st, 2021, 10:00 a.m., Legislative Voting Meeting to Order. I'll start with roll call this morning for number one. We are doing two. This is a hybrid meeting this morning, both virtually and in person. I will start with roll call. Henry Mitchell III, District One. Commissioner Henry Mitchell III, District One.
Present. Oh, I thought you were just saying I was here.
Okay. Commissioner and Vice Chairman Kelly Robinson, District Two.
Present. Commissioner of District Three, Torene O'Carthon.
Present.
Commissioner of District Four, Ann Jones Geider.
Present.
Ramona Jackson Jones, Chairman, present. Board of Commissioners, we do have a quorum. Board of Commissioners, again, I would like to welcome you and also our citizens and our appointed and elected officials this morning to our in-person meeting. We will start certainly. We have Reverend Darrell A. Mormon here from Old Mountain Baptist Church, Old Mountain Top Baptist Church. And then, once Reverend Mormon provide us with our invocation, we will have the Pledge to the Flag. Is Pastor Mormon here this morning? He's not here. I would ask if Rick Martin, if you could render invocation.
Is he online?
Is Pastor Mormon online? Lisa, could you tell me? Clerk? Okay. I just want to give the respect. Pastor Mormon, if you're on the line, please state, acknowledge your presence. I want to be respectful to you, Pastor. Being that he's not here, I would ask that our County Communications Director, Rick Martin, please render invocation this morning. And after that, Board of Commissioners, I ask that we remain standing for the Pledge to the Flag.
Good morning, Chairman Jones, Board of Commissioners, County Administrator Subidan and staff. May we bow our heads. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for the blessings of waking up this morning to be here and have an opportunity to be part of government. We ask and we pray, Lord, for our civic leaders. We pray for our county leaders, our staff, our first responders. We ask for grace for anything that may not go as you would like. We ask for the support of our citizens and for all in our community to be unified as we come together. We ask for the guidance of our elected leaders, that you be involved in helping make the difficult decisions of the day. In Heavenly Father, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Rick Martin, for rendering our invocation this morning. And also, I appreciate the Board of Commissioners for stating the Pledge of Allegiance with me. But however respectfully, we, the pastor just walked in. Pastor, and I want to respectfully give you an opportunity to come up and grace us. I know you were on the agenda, and I just wasn't sure if you were here. So the Lord asked me to move on, but you are here, and you are just in time. Do you mind, Pastor Mormon? I want to respect you as well and ask you just to say a few words over the county. Pastor Mormon? I don't know if he can hear me.
That must not be him.
Let me make sure. Yeah, that's Pastor Mormon. Okay. Pastor, just wanted you to just grace us this morning with prayer. You were on the agenda, and we, I didn't know that you were here, so we moved on. But if you could pray for us, we would greatly appreciate it.
You know I can't hear that way.
I know. Can you hear me now?
And I supposed to do the invocation right?
Yes, just say the prayer. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody bow your head if you will.
Thank you, Pastor.
Your toll is in your word that to pray for those that's in authority. And we come to invite you in this place leaning on your authority, but yet they have an authority in this community. Open up their hearts and minds to be used by you to do the right thing. You said you had the King's heart in your hand, that you can take it and move it in the way that you want. So have your way with these people in this meeting and crown them with wisdom like never before. In that we pray, in your mighty Son's name, amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Thank you so much. And we appreciate everything that you're doing at New Mountain Top Baptist Church, Pastor. All right, Clerk, we certainly have public comment. I'll let you lead off because you had a few announcements.
Yes, good morning, Chairman. We did have one individual sign in for public input. As you know, we have public hearings as well today. So if you are here to speak on the public hearings, if you could just wait until we get to that item on the agenda, and the Chairman will open those public hearings for you. But for public input, if you are here to speak on something on the agenda, we did have one individual sign in to speak. Mr. Bill Willis is here to speak regarding legal representation. Mr. Willis, if you could come up? And if you could just restate your name and address for the record?
My name is Bill Willis. I live at 8733 Cameron Drive, Winston, Georgia, 30187. And I wanted to speak this morning on the issue of legal representation of the county. I understand that the contract for Mr. Ken Bernard is being considered at this point of the renewal of that contract. Excuse me. How, I'm sorry, how much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay. Over, I spent 29 years as an administrator in the State University system in New Jersey. Served as Assistant Academic Vice President, Department Chair, and the Dean. And in one instance, when I was appointed or elected to a department chair, I had a secretary who I inherited from the previous administration. She took the occasion to inform me on a number of instances that initiatives which I had attempted to introduce were not the way things had been done under the previous administration. She was a civil service employee, and so I could not fire her. I also received just a couple of days ago a renewal of my membership in the museum, the High Museum. And it's an auto-renewal membership. They gave me a discount if I auto-renew my membership. Why would they do that? Why would they give me essentially money or the value of a 20% reduction in the membership for an auto-renewal contract? I would, I speak against that. I think the fact I have been resident of this county since 2008, I know that Attorney Bernard has provided valuable service to the county, and it's not against anything having to do with him as an individual. But I think that the idea of auto-renewal contracts, given that Mr. Bernard has served for 17 years, that the Board should have, should give serious consideration to renewal of a contract that does not include the auto-renewal provision and that other individuals, other firms should have the opportunity to be considered for this service. Spending that many years in the office, having a single person or a single firm serve for decades in the same office, I think, does present a kind of situation where it becomes, we become accustomed to the course of dealing and perhaps not as receptive to new visions that may be brought on by a new administration and changing demographics and other kinds of things in our county. So I urge the Board of Commissioners to seriously consider that issue on this occasion. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bill Willis, Dr. Willis, to be correct. Clerk, we have anyone else sign up?
No one signed up in person, Chairman. But if there is anyone on the line that would like to speak at this time that is not in reference to the public hearings, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
Yes. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, ma'am.
You can hear me? Okay.
Can you tell me what you're speaking on this morning?
Speaking regarding the property tax mileage rate issue.
Okay, that will be in a, that will be in a few moments. We have not gotten to that item yet. When the Chairman opens the public hearing, you'll be able to speak at that time.
Later. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much, Clerk, and thank you, our citizens on the line. We will certainly address your concerns momentarily when I open up the public hearing. Board of Commissioners, we have a presentation this morning, and it's an economic development presentation by Chris Pumphrey from the Development Authority. Executive Director Chris Pumphrey, please come forward and present to the Board of Commissioners. And Board of Commissioners, I ask if you could just hold your questions until his presentation has ended.
Thank you for allowing, allowing me to be here on behalf of the Development Authority. My name is Chris Pumphrey, here on behalf of the Development Authority to talk about a project that we've been working on for a number of years, in which we, I briefed you all on yesterday. We have embarked upon going after our target sectors here in the community that are different than what we have traditionally been accustomed to, warehouse and distribution, straight retail, and residential development. And we set out with our strategic plan, Community and Economic Development Strategic Plan, roughly five, five or six years ago now. And we unveiled that plan, and it was built upon four pillars. Those pillars were investing with intention, that's looking at the infrastructure, resources in order to move forward, economic development, building business success, what are our target sectors, how do we support existing industries, what are we doing for small business and entrepreneurship, and cultivating talent, building the talent pipeline for the jobs of today and of the future, and then celebrating our community. How are we marketing the community, the assets of the community externally and internally? And with that plan, next slide, maybe. There we go. With that plan, it laid out these particular target sectors, which I went over yesterday. They fell into three buckets, advanced manufacturing, professional technology services, and media and entertainment. Traditionally, as a, as a Development Authority, what you all have become accustomed to is that we typically will work to recruit companies into the community, will, those companies may qualify under our property tax incentive plan, and we will bring those companies to you for approval. However, Development Authorities have a number of tools within their toolbox, the reasons that they were created, that give local communities flexibility in order to move economic development, strategies, and agendas forward. I mentioned to you y'all yesterday that I spent the majority of the day in Macon with about 50-plus of my colleagues from around the state that are Development Authority execs, talking about the things that are happening within the Development Authority arena, the challenges that Development Authorities are facing, and also sharing some best practices. And I think Madam Geider asked a question about, you know, developing real estate. And it is a very common practice amongst Development Authorities to own real estate. And the reasons that they do that is really to try and trigger and ignite private sector development in arenas where they traditionally are not taking place. So, for example, in rural southwest Georgia, someone will go and buy land to develop an industrial park because they need industrial jobs to happen within their respective communities. For us, we have no problem recruiting industrial development into our community. The private sector developers are developing warehouses left and right. I mean, I know they're coming to you for rezonings, or coming to the council for rezonings. We have no issues there. But when we did our plan, the community said that they wanted something different. They wanted better-paying jobs. They wanted opportunities to go spend time enjoying themselves, shopping, enjoying the outdoors, or whatever that may be. And so within our plan, it called for us to look at real estate options to help us get to that place, to, to be more proactive in finding opportunities to where we can create those opportunities here in our community, and then partner with the private sector in order to make it happen. So with that, through the support of the Board of Commissioners, we embarked upon a master planning effort that was funded through SPOSS funds. We hired Clark Patterson Lee to produce a master plan. And this is that master plan here. It encompassed roughly 200-plus acres at the intersection of Lee Road and Fairburn Road. This is, also happens to be where the county has had long-term transportation plans to have what we call the Lee Road Extension, to basically create this southern inner arc that goes from Lee Road and I-20 underneath the city of Douglasville and back around to Bright Star and, and 278, or Highway 78, whichever one it's called. So creating that southern inner arc, and this being a key component of that arc, that is a gap. There's a gap that exists right here at, at that portion of the arc. Everything is connected, but it's not necessarily widened. So as you all know, you're about to embark upon the widening of Lee Road from I-20 down to Fairburn Road, which would be that four-lane landscape median divided parkway. And what we see here is an opportunity to, 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 we've identified a property that allows us to go after the sectors that the community said that they wanted, right? So we went through the public process, participated in September Saturdays, held public input meetings and what have you to get the public's input about what they wanted to have. And so this plan was created based on those desires, and I'll outline what some of those things included. They wanted retail, education, civic space, recreational opportunities, loft studios, restaurants, mixed-use development, business incubator, lodging and hotels, senior living, church, or professional, I can't read what's underneath that, oh, there we go, professional office. All of these things kind of to blend within this plan. And so we, that plan was then presented to you all as Board of Commissioners, and you adopted that concept plan back in 2018, understanding that this was going to be what the future of our community was going to be, creating this central node for, for economic development. We then took it upon ourselves to then hire a firm to investigate that plan, to look at the financial viability of the plan, look at the costs in order to implement that plan, and look at what are the resources that are necessary in order to move the plan forward. What we discovered in that process was that it was an extremely expensive plan, in that we needed to find the medium. We knew that the private sector alone wasn't going to come in and invest the $200 million off the bat in order to put that together. We knew that we alone couldn't invest $200 million to put that together, so we needed to find a balance. What was that, that, that price, that cost that, that becomes affordable, that you can balance, but then also creating that public-private partnership opportunity where the public sector plays a role, and the private sector plays a role, and we're both mitigating one another's risks? And so that's how we began to move forward on that plan. So what we have then kind of moved forward into is this transformative development, which you'll probably hear me say a number of times, but we identified this corridor really being that opportunity to go from the historic industrial side of the east side of Douglas County, moving into the more suburban part of the central Douglas County and into the rural component, but Fairburn Road really being that, that, that transitional corridor. You see everything that the city of Douglasville is doing on the north side, going all the way up to Paulding County, what the bypass is doing to open up that area, and the LCI that was done by the Board of Commissioners back in the early 2000s that identified how we wanted that corridor to develop. So what we have then moved forward on is, is targeting roughly 195 acres that is partially, that would be partially owned by the Development Authority for a short period of time and partially owned by the public, by the private sector more long-term. Since we've unveiled this, since we have started working on this plan and identifying a private development partner to move forward with us, we have also continued to market this site for projects. And as you may recall from our niche sectors, one of those projects, one of our sectors deals with media and entertainment. And so we have an awesome opportunity with a project that we call Project Silver. That would be $100 million investment that would create thousands of jobs right here in our community, a transformative opportunity for what we want. The public said they wanted diverse options for jobs, we're providing that. The public said they wanted gathering spaces, it's why we went to target this site. So we're doing everything that the public said that they wanted to have happen. So we're creating this plan, we've modified it to an extent, but we're still maintaining high-density mixed-use residential, commercial, and office development, green space, and walkability. We're expecting that this is roughly a $250 million investment that will happen primarily from the private sector. As you also know, we're going through the TAD feasibility process right now. We're estimating that we're roughly around $75 million in new increment as far as the taxes go, which yields, which is going to yield somewhere between $25 and $30 million in, in potential TAD bonds. So the, the transaction that we have basically set up is this, and you may recall in some of our, like, one-on-one meetings, what, one of the things that we were looking for was as a Development Authority, we really couldn't go out and just acquire the land on our own. We just didn't have $10 million of cash in order to do that. And as I mentioned, some of those other communities before that have invested in land, those are typically, those investments are funded in a number of ways. They're funded through SPOSS, they're funded through a bond issuance that's, you know, backed by the local government, or in a mixture of cash on hand. So what we have done is pursued a pathway that does not necessitate the Board of Commissioners acquiring the land, does not necessitate the Board of Commissioners backing any financing for the land. What we have come up with is a means to where as a Development Authority, we can acquire the land non-recourse based on contracts. Our contracts are simply this, we have a contract for the Project Silver, we have a contract with the private sector developer who would be kind of the master developer, and then we would look for a contract for the right-of-way to encompass the Lee Road Extension. And so that's what you'll, you'll see here, the right-of-way, as we're estimating is 47 or so acres, we know where Miguel and his team will, will be going through the engineering of that to identify exactly what that acreage is. We estimate it's around $2.5 million. We don't know exactly right now. And we would sell roughly 67 acres to the private sector developer. There's another 30 acres that we would hold for future development, so future economic development. It's a piece of property that really does not hold value until the Lee Road Extension is, is built. So we will hold that 30 acres. But once again, this is non-recourse to the Board of Commissioners, and what we're, all we're asking for today is just a commitment on the right-of-way extension, a right-of-way acquisition for, for the Lee Road Extension, if that makes sense. That sums up that presentation, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pumphrey. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Pumphrey or remarks? I think I heard Commissioner Vice Chairman Robinson first, and then, so your hand, Commissioner. I'm turning, my head is turning, and then I got you, Commissioner.
Which one?
You have the.
All right, no problem.
I heard your voice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning.
All right. So, good, very succinct presentation, thank you. Definitely on point. To acknowledge the public's input, this is a long time coming. It encompasses a vision, a progression for this county, a leadership group that sees the future but acknowledges the input of the citizens. This, this process, I cannot underemphasize or overemphasize the process. I mean, you guys did a stellar job of getting input and coming up with the elements that the citizens want. We have been talking about this for five or six years. It was always a dream or a vision. Now we're a place where, okay, now we're at a place where we got to take action, right? Real commitment. And so, a couple of things you did mention that I wanted to just clarify, and I won't take long because we've got a full agenda, is you mentioned that this, the TAD, and this is key too, not only did you get citizen input, last year, this target area, the voters voted for this TAD, right?
Correct.
All right, so one, two things. The public agreed to this strategic plan that the Board of Commissioners adopted, with citizens' input, and then last year, the public voted in a referendum for a TAD. All right, so we're just acting on what the citizens asked us to do, as we always do. All right? So here we are about to implement that. And so what I'm hearing you say, two things, that the TAD will give what, did you say 35 million up to?
75.
You know, I mean, up to, up to some number, clarify for me, up to $35 million in TAD proceeds, is that accurate?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just give just a brief explanation of that. So basically, our consultant, KB Advisory Group, has looked at the master plan that we have to date.
Yep.
And they basically run projections based on what the uses might be on that site, but also what the uses might be in that TAD area, right? And so you, you, you're estimating, you don't know exactly. There's another phase that really will have another financial advisement firm that would come in and do the real deal study, but our just base estimates based on what we assume will happen in that area is roughly a range between 25 and 30 million.
All right, I mean, all right, so we had this conversation yesterday, but I'm going to just bring it up again. You mentioned the Lee Road widening by itself. It's two and a half miles from I-20 up to Fairburn Road, 22 million. This is a little bit less than that, but obviously, we're not just widening, we're constructing, which is the extension, it's somewhere around the same number, 20 million. What you're asking for right now is for us to buy the land under it first. Let's get the right-of-way, which is estimated at total, what'd you say, two and a half, three and a half? What'd you say?
Yeah, we're, we're estimating this two and a half million, it's going to be based on acreage.
That's fine, all right, no problem. Two and a half million, 6,500 acre, whatever number is back into it, no problem, got it. All right, so two and a half million dollar commitment that you're asking for the Board of Commissioners today. And you said that, okay, if we buy this land, which, I mean, don't get me wrong, that, you know, maybe there's some future use that we can use for housing and, you know, obviously county expansion. The county has bought land before, we have several vacant acreages on our books right now that have been bought by prior administrations that this current administration inherits. And, and perhaps we will do the same as we go forward. We bought the jail land right down the street, 29 acres. We spent $10 million on 30 acres in 2007. We used the general fund to pay that $10 million for 29 acres. How many acres is this, Chris?
We're projecting roughly 47.
Well, 40, just 47 acres. So I can, for two and a half million dollars, I can get 47 acres versus 30 acres, 10 million. All right, so at some point, I'm going to get down to source of funding, and this is really a conversation to our board. And at some point, I know, hopefully, our financial advisor is here to help us think through the, the options that may be available. Chris, you've alluded to them, but again, we get there as an arms length between the Development Authority and the Board of Commissioners. And so we, we know the, how that may work. So that being said, I think I, I'm comfortable with what I'm hearing, I acknowledge Project Silver, I acknowledge the other things that are coming down to the table. You say that you have contracts that are available. So what happens if, in fact, we make this resolution? No problem. We pass. I, I mean, has anybody within this administration actually seen the contracts? And this is something that the Development Authority has to. And this is something that the Development Authority has to, it, I just need that question answered to show us that, okay, well, where's their contracts? They want, I mean, I'm in the public.
Sure.
All right, so, I'm game, but, and I trust you, but this is business. We just prayed, I trust God, we trust others to bring data. So I got to be, like, I got you, I hear you, but can you give us some degree of, yeah, I got the contracts, I don't care if you showed it to the lawyer, to the financial advisor, somebody, the chair, somebody needs to have seen these contracts. It can't be a sales, because we keep hearing great presentations, like, okay, I got you, man, I wanted to vote for it, but give us that it's there. Has that happened yet?
It can happen with a press of ascend. I've got it right here. Got all the contracts.
Press of ascend, all right, all right, then, I won't belabor it. Y'all heard him, I got him official record, he said press of ascend, so he has it in his possession. I'm clear on what I'm looking at, Chris, I just wanted to sort of frame the elements, two and a half million dollars that you're asking for, I mean, obviously, the splosts, I mean, okay, you may have some in there, I mean, we've been asking for a reforecast of proceeds, I mean, obviously, Lee Road is part of that, we probably can expand that, we can use the general fund, I mean, it's up to the board. So ma'am chair, I think I'm okay right now. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Carthen, and then to follow you is Commissioner Guyer.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson hit one of my questions, which was, yeah, do we have assurance that these particular individuals who are looking to put, you know, who are looking to develop in that area is actually going to do it? Although I don't mind us buying the right-of-way, I don't want us to just sit on that, because two and a half million dollars, you know, wherever we take it from, it's two and a half million dollars less than what we, as a county, can do, you know, that, you know, in handling county business. So I just don't want to just flip and vote for that. Although I do think it's a great project, I am in favor of economic development, I am on the TAD committee to make sure that, you know, we are looking at all avenues to bring in the right type of economic development. I'm excited about what I see, I'm excited that the voters voted for it, but I just do want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence before we decide if we're going to add a mill for economic development or to give the money to the right-of-way. So I'm glad that you do have those contracts so that we can see it, and I would just say in the future, just allow us, even if you have to cross out the name, just allow us to see that, because it gives us assurance. When people are asking us questions, and our constituents do, they ask us what's going on, I want to be able to be transparent and say, well, I've seen that this is this, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So those are my comments, but thank you, ma'am chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. Commissioner Guyer?
Hey, Chris.
Good morning.
Well, I put you through the wringer yesterday, so I'm not going to do that today. But I would like to correct something that Commissioner Robinson said. We did pay for the jail property out of the general fund, but we paid it back with a splosh. So it was done with splosh funds, because we actually has enough money left from the splosh that we could renovate the tag and tax office over there. The TAD resolution that was passed is to give us the capability to establish TADS, not, it was not specifically for this project, right?
Yeah, but I would say in the marketing of it, we primarily focused on, the marketing was primarily focused on the Lee Road in this particular area.
With the Lee Road, okay. I was given a report, I asked a question yesterday from our finance department to please provide me what, how much the digest grew just from growth, not revale. Revale is on existing property from the prior year, but just on our growth, and do you know we're negative all the way down the line? If we had just stayed with our growth and not the revale, we would have made 120-something thousand dollars difference from last year. That's how our growth is down. I don't, I'm skeptical that those figures are correct, and I don't know, it kind of floored me. We have not had negative growth like that on real estate. Real estate's booming, it's hot right now. And where's, either the digest figures are wrong, or y'all aren't bringing in any growth. So that's something I've got to establish in my mind, where's the growth? You're saying you, all the manufacturing and everything, all that, the buildings down there are just, it's booming? Where's the growth on the digest? So, and I was just giving these figures. I asked for the figures yesterday, and I was just kind of showing them today, and I think finance will go over that. But something's wrong somewhere.
Yeah, I would say that's surprising to me as well, because I can run off a number of buildings that have been developed in the last year and cut them in line.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Where's the growth? Something is wrong somewhere. And so a red flag has gone up with me on everything. So I just, I think the project is a good project. I don't like the fact that you want to put a government building down there. The government builders, as we said, we bought lots of property around here that we could still build on. We're building a new driver's facility over there by the jail on part of that land. So it's, it wasn't just for the jail, we have a new 911 facility in the back. So, and I don't know how much land we got left, I hope we have enough to put an admin building in the vicinity of the courthouse, you know? But I'm just saying, with the figures I've looked at today, someone's got to explain it to me. So, and maybe you need to go and talk with the assessor's office or someone, but I've never, as many years as I was in the tax office, I never saw a digest growth go down, except possibly 2009 when the crash happened. We're not having a crash now. We're having a boom as far as property. And in my district, I've got lots and lots of growth going up, but I'd also have a lot of people moving out. Our population didn't even grow that much. So I think we need to kind of step back and think about this first before we commit one mill, that's $5 million. And we have a rainy day fund, we're supposed to put money in according to our new policy. Trouble is, we spend it before the ink is dried on it. We had, it was right at $3 million, I saw the figures again last night, and two and a half million was spent. So, just in one day, one day. So, and that was, if we'd left it in there, we'd have your two and a half million, is what I'm saying. That's what it's for, is for projects that's unexpected.
Yeah.
With that, I just, pardon?
And I'll just say, I know, we definitely track all of the projects that at least have a property tax incentive, and we can show kind of what they pay in increase on an annual basis, so we definitely track that.
Well, your incentives is an exemption on the digest.
Correct, but they're also paying, so, as well, so I'm not really sure how it computes.
I don't either. I don't know, it floored me.
Yeah.
And I think it floored the finance director too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I've never seen a digest go down as much as it did. That's why I always compared last year to this year, you know, previous years, to make sure some, zero or extra two or three zeros were not removed or taken off or something or added to.
Yeah.
We found a $60 million problem when the digest was given to me one year because there was too many zeros.
Yeah.
But I called it before we turned it over to the county commissioners. But I'm just saying, I've got to rethink everything now. So I appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Your back.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. I have one question for you. Chris, it's not necessarily a question, it may be something that I can just piggyback off our transportation director as of yesterday. Commissioner Guyer, respectfully, I want to just say that we'd had no new growth, and you were correct, around that 2009, 10 era, because that was during the Great Recession. So certainly, those numbers in terms of our new growth, because we've had a lot of building, that kind of has my mind moving back and forth as well. So, but I do want to say that there may be some opportunity, you said you need $2.5 million for the right-of-way. I was listening to that yesterday, our transportation director talked about the great home run at ARC, which was $4 million that he and I worked on. Initially, the county's portion was 11 million for Lee Road area, and the state was going to contribute 11 million. Now the state is contributing 14 million, so that gives us, I found $3 million in my mind that may be coming down on that splosh component, so not sure if that money is already allocated, but that may be an opportunity. But that was a big home run on that ARC, and myself and Director Valentin worked very hard to secure that extra funding. So I just want the board to think about that in that way. That's about, probably about $3.8 million or $4 million that we really pulled in to take pressure off that 11 million that the county was allocating.
That's great.
So today, the county has only allocated 7 million, just thinking outside the box. So thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just, I want to make sure, because I want to separate the conversations. I'll get to the military when we get to the hearing, which is a different than what I was talking to you about, Chris. I just want to frame that. But I do, to Madam Guyer's point, this is important, to Commissioner Carthen's point. If I buy land, I'm not in the land-holding business. I buy land in 2007 for $10 million for 30 acres. I've got to wait and hope that the citizens vote two years later in an off-year to build a $100 million jail. Stay with me. The reimbursement came after we had paid our bonds along the way, five or six years later. Don't confuse the math. In other words, you're holding $10 million that you took out the general fund, Commissioner Carthen, we took $10 million out the general fund, we went from about 18 to 11 million. This was, this is major. We did, now we're going into a recession. We got reimbursed after the fact, after, after we performed with the jail, with the splosh during a recession, and the proceeds left over, then we began incrementally reimbursing ourselves. So, okay, yeah, put a provision in there, Chris, to make sure we get our two and a half, that's not the point, it's the carrying cost. It's the opportunity cost to not be able to do something else while we're holding this, waiting for the manifestation. So I just had to make sure, I didn't need to be corrected, know my facts, know the point, which is, if we do this, it defers us from doing something else, which is okay, and yes, we can get reimbursed. I'm just showing the order of magnitude, well, if y'all did therefore a jail back then, surely if we do something like this, it's for the greater good of the citizens. I mean, because, I mean, that was the whole point, like, okay, we appreciate the, I mean, the jail, okay, whatever, I mean, it consumed everything. We took $10 million out the general fund for some land for a jail that was a single item decision. Nobody else benefited. Uh huh. It's not a good comparison, but it's an excellent comparison about the decision that now all the citizens have been involved in this process, and, okay, can we all get something out there, some office space, some park space, this space, that space, it's not just something to incarcerate people. Right? So this is about policy. This is about appropriation, says, okay, I got that, that was the old guard, new guard says, okay, now we got to be more distributed. Right? Let's just concentrate it in one area. This is about appropriation, Chris, so this really is a public debate about what is, I don't have to think too hard about it. Right? We want to go to that extreme for that type of decision, and this is much less than, go back to Plan A versus Plan B, this is much softer. Right? It makes sense, it's just the will of the board, but I know that, and this is the last point, ma'am chair, I need to bring out him. So, Chris, what is the timeframe that you need from us? So I know you're asking today, is there some type of perishability? I need you to say it, I don't want to lead you.
Yeah, sure thing, sure thing. So our intent is to close based on agreements this year. So our actual takeouts won't happen until 2022. So what we're not asking for is, you know, the funding today, we're just asking for the commitment of the right-of-way acquisition for the roadway, just like we're also working on a contract with the master developer that is, will have them taking us out, and then we have the Project Silver, that is another takeout. So those are all contractual agreements that we then go to the closing table on, and then in the first quarter of 2022, we'll start executing those takeouts.
All right. So let me, then, again, I got to stay on task, my last question, ma'am chair, is David Corbin here? Is our financial advisor online or present?
I think he's online.
Yes.
Ma'am chair, may I ask him to speak?
Yes. David Corbin, our chief financial advisor, would you please, are you on the line?
Yes, he on Zoom.
Okay, he's on Zoom.
All right, so, all right.
Thank you.
David Corbin, this is Commissioner Kelly Robinson, and I've got a question to follow up behind Director Pumphrey's framing of his two and a half million dollar ask right now. Are there, can you explain maybe four options that we, three or four, whatever the options are that are, that we can consider? I just need facts, are the options that are available as to make this happen? He's asking us to make a decision today to commit to this, which we need to know what the options are for us to even consider that, and if so, we would have to form that in a resolution, so in a motion. Can you explain maybe the options that would be before the Board of Commissioners, please, sir?
I don't think he heard you. So, is he on the line?
He was online a moment ago, but it looks like he's, the Zoom side of it failed, I'm assuming, because Alex and I was working on that earlier.
Which, I'm okay, ma'am chair, for the sake of time, we do still have the public hearing component dealing with the military.
Yes.
Ah, there he is.
There you go.
Okay.
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
I think the question is, what are the options? If you were to entertain this particular action, what are the financial options to meet this, I guess, this appropriation? There really are two categories. The first one is, is the county pay for the option or basically pay the expense? The source of that fund can be the general fund, which would, at this point, come out of fund balance. If you have sufficient fund balance, we think meeting your budget requirements, your minimum budget, your fund balance requirements this year, you have enough in excess fund balance to be able to absorb that particular cost. Or either you can go out and borrow the money. You can go out and borrow the money when and if needed to basically meet that obligation, or some combination thereof. So that's one side of the ledger. The other side of the ledger is Chris and the Development Authority can go out and borrow the money on your behalf, and you would basically pledge to pay him back at the time of takeout for that loan that he would get. Now, your financial structure and your credit structure, if you're going to borrow money, would be significantly better than Chris borrowing it on your behalf. So there really are only two or three, so either Chris borrows money for you, you come out of the general fund, or you borrow the money yourselves and then contribute that to Chris, to the overall project when it's necessary. And any of those options can then be reimbursed if you wanted to out of a splosh come 2023 or at some other point in time, it would be a reimbursable expense for the project if you decide to move forward with that project. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, it did. So just put one follow-on. So, the ask is today for two and a half million dollars to acquire the right-of-way associated with this initiative. Now it comes down to timing. General fund, I understand, it's cash, they write a check. How long would it take to do both of those in light of the fact that Chris is saying that his time constraint is, he still didn't say the date, but it's good enough that it's impending. Can you explain how long it would take that if we said go to you, that it would take for you to secure us credit on our behalf, or if you would have to work with the Development Authority to go through the process for them to do it and come back to the board? Can you roughly, I know, I can't commit you, I mean... Can you roughly, I know, I can't commit you, I'm looking for a framing for the board?
Well, less than, I think less than 90 days. But again, for the sake of timing, your timing issue is resolved because you have cash. The county has sufficient cash. So from a timing perspective, you always have the cash, knowing that you're going to be, if it goes beyond 90 days, you're going to be reimbursed from the credit transaction that we would initiate at some point, once given authority by the board. So we can always reimburse you out of a credit trend, even if it takes longer than 90 days. So because you have enough cash in your accounts right now to cover that, out of fund balance, without upsetting the apple cart at this point with your fund balance requirements.
Got it. You sufficiently answered my question. Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Thank you, Chris. Madam Chair, you have the floor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I add one thing to what David said?
Yes.
If you do advance out of current funds, I would recommend a reimbursement resolution ahead of that expenditure, just to cover you for downrange.
Okay. That is something to consider.
May I?
Yes. Commissioner Guyder.
I can't see your mouth, so sorry. Mr. Corbin, are you, Mr. Corbin, are you still on the line?
He should be.
I'm still on the line.
Okay, this is Commissioner Guyder. Just wanted to get your viewpoint on one other item. I did a trending spreadsheet, and it seems like we're going to have lots of money left over at the end of the year, too. So I don't know. Chris, do you have to have this two and a half million before the end of the year? Our commitment from us?
The commitment needs to happen within the next, like, today or the next session at the latest. The reason being, the reason being is, is we're putting all of our agreements together. The actual funding itself doesn't need to happen until, it can happen at the end of the year, or it can happen in the first quarter.
Next year.
So the funds aren't needed today. It's just the agreement is needed now.
The, but the fund balance is probably going to grow at the end of the year. Right now, what is our fund balance? 17 million?
Well, is 17, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, is it?
However, once we receive the tax, property tax payment, it will increase, we're estimating to about 30 cents.
So we're going to have money left over at the end of the year, too. According to the trend of spending right now, if you take, you know, the seven months and what we average each month and carry it out to 12 months, we're in good shape.
That is correct.
Okay. So the fund balance would be replenished, is pretty much what I'm saying. Do you agree? Mr. Corbin?
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that quote? I'm having a little trouble hearing.
Okay. What I said is, our trending on our expenditures are below projections, and so we're going to probably have some funds to replenish any fund balance that we take out right now. We've already got 17 million. We're required, we, I think we were shooting for 14 million.
I think it's 12 million this year. In '22, you were at a 10% fund balance requirement at the beginning of the year. At the beginning of '22, we are, by board approval, that is to be moved to 12%.
Right.
So you're going to have, you have excess fund balance today, over and above that requirement. But based on trends and what we're looking at, you should be making a net contribution to fund balance at the end of the year as well.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you very much. I yield.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes. And great conversation, and I think everybody is clear, or starting to get clearer, as to kind of the need and the ask. So just to add to that, so Chris, so do we clear, even though we speak about the meal as a development piece, your concern is only about, roughly about $2.5 to $3 million, correct?
Correct.
So with that, I just don't want to, I just don't want to kind of get everybody confused as to the meal and the need.
Sure.
So your need is only roughly, I'm going to say, $3 million.
Okay.
And it's not today that that million, or that $3 million is needed. It's the agreement or the board to agree with coming on board with the project. And I'm assuming that leads into the, what is it, the streets and roads? Help me out. What's the three mill we'll cover?
Yes.
Right-of-way, thank you.
Right-of-way.
The right-of-way. So that's your ask.
Yes, sir.
So with that, I just don't want us to get, because there's a lot going on here. There's a lot of dynamics, and I don't want everybody to get confused as to whether it's a meal that this board may decide to increase the miller rate by a meal. That's not your concern. Your concern is about roughly $3 million, and however we get to it, and that will help in what you're doing to put the pieces together of the puzzle that you're dealing with, a couple of investors and so on and so forth, correct?
Correct.
One last option, one last question, though. Would it be an ideal layout for the Development Authority to seek on our behalf the funds needed to move this project forward, or preferably outside of our commitment and/or the general fund budget to pull it off or borrow, as David mentioned? What would be your thoughts of you extending your credit through us, you know, on our behalf and doing it?
Yeah, I mean, and we would definitely work very closely with David, you know, on that. We can do that. It just really all boils down to the ability to have, to carry, right? You know, and we don't have the ability to carry that significant amount, right?
Understood.
And so, which is why we tried to take this from a very speculative request, where we're asking you to fund the entire land acquisition in hopes someone would come. We've kind of narrowed it down to, all right, well, the Board of Commissioners has already said that the Lee Road extension in that Southern Inner Arc is something that is on the books.
Yes.
So let's go focus on that part, the less speculative piece, right? Let's focus on that and then allow us to then do the speculative part with the private sector.
Understood.
Yeah.
And yes, that project, the Lee Road connector, is an important piece to this board. That's why we've got millions that's already being spent to get us the Fairburn Road from Lee Road. And the second half of this will go to 78. As my dear friend, colleague, Vice Chairman Robinson, we've always stated this, and we'll take our portions as it comes forth. But that, we as a board have to decide on what's important.
Yeah.
If we think that is important to apply this administrative building near the sheriff, which, from my understanding, and I can probably ask Madam Suburban to articulate this, I don't think there's enough land left after the DDS to even pull off that type of a move near the Sheriff Department, because that would have been ideal before the DDS. But now the DDS and the state has made that commitment, I don't think that exists any longer. There's not enough land to pull off something of this magnitude of what you request. One last thing. So how much of this 200 acres that we'll be looking at the administrative building, if by chance it passed, how much of that portion will, because we're looking at $3 million now, but down the road, those numbers, and I know David and I have had this conversation, I'm not looking for you to comment, David, but there's going to be what I call the operating cost, the build-out cost, and all the other things that's going to be forthcoming. So I hope this board is not under the illusion that $3 million, and we're going to get a building, we're going to get land and all this other good stuff. So I hope they're being realistic and understanding that this is only the first step in the right direction, but there are some larger steps that's going to be needed down the road, maybe not in the next year or two, but it's coming. Am I correct?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, and I think we've separated, you know, this ask from any discussion around the administration, you know, facility, because you still need to decide, you know, where you want to do that. But if you do decide that you do want to do that there, then yes, it would be a very, you know, perfect, you know, component within the overall plan. But yeah, the costs for that, whether you do it here or whether you do it there, are still, you know, close to the same.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the $3 million that you're thinking is not it. As Vice Chairman Robinson stated, that this community decided to take a splotch, a Tier 1 splotch, and spend a million plus for what I call the Taj Mahal jail. We got it, they voted for it, and, you know, voila, it's here. I think this is just a small fry in this bigger picture of what we're looking at down the road for this county and this government. So I think this is a great look. I think your presentation was spot on. We just got to decide as a board, what really do we see three, five, 10 years from today versus, and it definitely will not be in this building, that's for sure.
Yeah.
We only one courthouse move away from being ousted out of this building. So I see that being the case, but, Chris, again, thank you. I think now the community and others can put the things in perspective, but there's a whole lot of moving parts here. But your request of the $3 million, I'll call it, is only the first step, because the larger steps will forthcoming if we're really serious about where we're going and what we see and envision this county government and this county. And that Lee Road entry to Douglas County will be the, I guess, the entry point of that I-20 corridor, ideal for what we're trying to do. So thank you again. Great presentation. I mean, I love my colleagues with all the Q and A, and thank you for your presentation. I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Guyder, you have the floor.
Could I just ask, Chris, one more question, please?
Sure.
Okay, if you buy the property and then you resell it, what do you do with the profits? Y'all keep it and reinvest it?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't venture to say our profit margin is significantly large, but yeah, we would look to reinvest it. We've got a significant amount in it already, over a few hundred thousand dollars that we've already kind of put into it. So we would sell off, you know, certain pieces to recruit some of that. We've got a...
But you'd sell it at market value.
As close as we possibly can. Yeah.
But you, y'all would keep the profits to move the project forward?
Yeah.
To help move the project forward.
Yeah, and it gives us flexibility to figure out how we use it, but we've not gotten to that point where we've been more focused on trying to get the agreement set up. And really, our timing on this has really been accelerated because we do have an active economic development project. I think that has really kind of pushed the timeline on us as we've kind of gone through this. Our option is through the end of March, so that's when our option expires. But, so we're kind of moving down this path, but our acceleration right now is a major transformative development.
Okay. I yield back. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Pumphrey. Certainly no action will be taken today because the board has to work in tandem with all the language that needs to be drafted for a resolution. So I meant, you said two weeks would be good. We have a meeting in two weeks. I'm going to ask the county administrator at the pleasure of this board if she could work with you to make sure we get all the language set up for this particular resolution to come before this board of commissioners on our... Lisa, what meeting is our next meeting? Is it September? I just wanted, for the record. I'm so sorry to surprise you.
The next meeting is, sorry, the 13th and 14th.
Okay. Mr. Pumphrey, September 13th and 14th.
Yes, ma'am.
My dad's birthday is September 13th. That may be a lucky number for you. But anyway, I just wanted to, that's okay. Is that timeframe suitable?
Yes, ma'am, that'd be excellent. If we can have that and we can communicate that back to the development parties that were presenting a resolution on those dates, that'd be great for us to move forward.
Board of Commissioners, at your commission, I mean, at your pleasure, is that okay? Want to make sure. Okay? Makes sense. Thank you so much, Mr. Pumphrey.
Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, we're going to move on to the approval of our minutes. Our clerks did notify me of one correction that need to be made. Clerk, if you could notify this board of that correction, and then I'll certainly call and ask for approval of the minutes.
Yes, ma'am. On the commission meetings, minutes, the resolution regarding Fox Hall, there was just a typo in that, in the number on the vote. So I just need to correct that to 5-0. Right now, it says 0-0.
Okay. So the, just to clarify what the clerk said, she said our vote regarding Fox Hall was 5-0, and the minutes, and the minutes, it's 0 to 0, but she's going to correct that. So Board of Commissioners, if you please, if you accept that correction, I certainly will call for the approval of the minutes of the commission meeting minutes of August 17, 2021, the work session minutes of August 16, 2021, the mid-year workshop minutes of August 12th and August 13th, 2021, the executive session minutes of August 12th and August 13th and August 16th, 2021, and our special call meeting minutes for, meeting minutes for August 24th, 2021. Board of Commissioners, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections that need to be made?
So moved to approve as stated and edited.
Okay. If there are no other statements, this...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion about these, the minutes? We have a motion and a second. Board of Commissioners, and I know, Lisa, you don't have it set up, this is verbal. If you agree with the minutes and you approve accordingly, please indicate by raising your right hand. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote, and the motion carries. Thank you so much, Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners, we're moving right into our public hearing, and certainly I'm going to yield to the clerk to kind of frame, get everything framed for me, and then we'll move from there. She has some special instructions to provide to the citizens that are joining us through Zoom, and also our citizens that are here in person. Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. As you can see, we actually have two public hearings this morning, so we will be starting with the public hearing for the new beer, wine, liquor, alcohol license for April Southern Bistro. And we will do these public hearings separately, so the chairman will open and close each one individually. And we will address, once the chairman opens the public hearing for item number six, we will address citizens who may be in person to speak first, and once they have spoken, we will address the ones that are on the Zoom call.
Madam Chair, could I get Lisa to put the microphone closer to her? It's hard to hear.
I'm sorry. Is this better?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. We have our Ron Roberts here this morning with the Board of Commissioners to engage us in a conversation or the public hearing initially with the, and the topic is new beer, wine, liquor, alcohol licenses for April Southern Bistro, which is tab number six. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, county administrator. It's good to be here today. I have an application, a full application packet for beer, wine, and liquor license on, the applicant is April's Place LLC, and the licensee is April Young Williams. Had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Williams right before I came up here for this meeting. She's on the line to answer any questions. The location for this is at 2562 Fairburn Road. Again, we have a complete packet with the RAS certification, references, background checks, everything that's required for this. And I believe, like I said, Mrs. Williams should still be on the line to answer any questions that you may have. So we'll have to open a public hearing and do that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Roberts. This public hearing, Board of Commissioners, at your pleasure, this public hearing is now open. Do we have anyone here to speak on behalf of this new beer, wine, liquor, alcohol license for April Southern's Bistro? Anyone here would like to speak? And certainly, if Ms. April is on the line, certainly would like to hear from her. Can you get on the line for me?
Yes, ma'am, I'm on the line.
Okay, Ms. April, how are you doing today?
I'm doing good, and yourself? Thank you for asking.
Okay, good. Can you tell us, the Board of Commissioners, a little bit about your request for this new beer, wine, liquor license, and tell us how you plan on making sure you stay within the guidelines and requirements and policies related to your request for this license?
Yes.
Um, April's Place has been in the Douglas County, um, area since two thousand and thirteen. We've run a full-service restaurant. At one point, we were two locations. Up until twenty twenty, um, we, um, went to one location. Um, and so now we were, um, moving to, um, another location to turn it into a full-service restaurant. Um, we thought that would be a great asset, um, to that end of Douglasville on Fairburn Road. Um, we went through the training and the RAS training. Um, we understand the importance of making sure, um, that we have to do that ongoing, um, for the safety and make sure that we follow all rules and protocols. Um, so we will make sure that, um, we implement that on a regular.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. April. Board of Commissioners, if you have any questions for Ms. April? I know the public hearing is still open, uh, right now, and having one to speak for, you know, on, on her behalf. So, uh, before I yield to you, Board of Commissioners, uh, to allow you to speak to Ms. April, is there anyone in, uh, the public hearing, within this public hearing that's against this request for the license or oppose? Please come forth, and you have three minutes, well, five minutes to speak, sorry, not three. For the public hearing, I usually like to allow five minutes. And please, when you come forth, you need to state your name and address.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rahama Jones, and I was-
What is your name again? I'm so sorry.
Rahama Jones.
Could you spell that for us for the record?
It's R U H A M A H Jones.
And your address?
Yes, my address is fourteen seventy-five Waterton Trail, Douglasville, Georgia, three zero one three four. Um, I just have a question in regards to the business model for April's Place, because there is a church in the vicinity, um, the business hours, that they'll be selling alcohol, um, at the location, and perhaps, how does that conflict with the other businesses that are there at the property? Um, and what would that look like, you know, for the other businesses that are there?
Okay. Ms. Jones, the, the board's job is not to answer the question for you, we just, we wanna hear you, your concerns, so is that your concern?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Is that all you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else against this request? Okay. If we have no other further comments, uh, being that no one else, uh, has-
I just had one more to add to, to the citizen's, uh, question.
Okay.
Part of the, part of the packet is that we do measure our distances for these applications from, from churches, and that was part of what's in here as well.
Okay. We have no one else is here to speak. Uh, this public hearing is now closed. Uh, certainly, Board of Commissioners, I wanna open up if you have any questions for Ms. April. Uh, Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll take the lead on this, this is in District Two. Uh, I do appreciate, um, your investment in, in our community. I recognize the pandemic, the outstanding impact of expansion and contraction, uh, for, for all citizens, um, and entrepreneurial as well. And I, obviously, I, I love a hot meal, um, Southern on top of that. Couple of questions, though, and Ron Roberts, come back to the front, I wanna make sure that that was answered. Are you saying that she is of distance?
Right. Yes, sir, as part of, part of the application package, the Assistant County Engineer measures the distances for these applications from, from, uh, religious, uh, facilities, and that is included in here as well.
Okay, but it's included, but is it, does she, is she inside of it, or is she?
Outside of the distance.
She's outside, so she's good? Or no?
She's good.
Okay. Yeah, I just need that be said. I didn't mean anything being inferred, um, cause it would be a concern if she was.
Absolutely.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that was clear. Uh, second question is, um, so you're gonna have beer, wine, are we gonna have spirits? It's just like a, I heard you say full-service restaurant, um, which I, I know that obviously the Lee Road corridor, a small area, um, that's something that citizens ask for, more higher scale, you know, we want a little bit better restaurant in that area. Uh, the fast food restaurant is sort of like, okay, you get old, it gets tiresome, so I do acknowledge, um, the innovation and the entrepreneurship that you're bringing here. Can you explain a little bit more about your full service? So that means, I heard Southern, can you explain, when you say beer, wine, is that also spirits? Explain that for us, please, for the record, because this is dealing with a alcohol license.
Yes, sir, it will be beer, wine, and spirits. Um, it will be a dining experience. Um, that's what I meant by full service. Um, so it won't be the regular grab and go like we are now. Um, we will have full wait service.
Okay. How many square feet is your location, if you know offhand?
Twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Got it. How many, um, people can you accommodate in there?
Fifty.
All right, very good. Fifty, and specifically, what are your hours of operations? The question was asked by the citizen, please.
Um, eleven to eight, um, during the week. Um, and on the weekends, we're gonna open from ten to four and open back up from seven to nine.
Ten to four, seven to nine, so breakfast, ten to four, seven to nine, breakfast and late evening. Okay, got it. A little break. Got it. I'm sure I've asked enough questions for now for that. I'll yield back, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Or comments? Okay, and I did hear RAS training is in place, right? That, that is already current.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, Board of Commissioners, you have heard the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, board? We have a motion and a second. Please prepare to cast your votes.
Chairman, motion carries five oh.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, we have a five oh unanimous vote to approve the new, new beer, wine, liquor, alcohol license for April Southern's, uh, Southern Bistro, and the motion carries. So, thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. April, and all our, uh, visitors.
Thank you also very much.
Okay, you're welcome. We're gonna move on to tab number seven, which is related to the millage rate. We have our own, uh, Mr. Roseland Miller, uh, Director Miller, who will be presenting to the Board of Commissioners this morning regarding the millage rate proposal, and then, Board of Commissioners, we will vote accordingly.
Good morning, Chairman and Board of Commissioners.
Good morning. Good morning.
This morning, I would like to present, um, the millage rate for twenty twenty-one's tax year. Um, this is our third public hearing, this will be the last public hearing. Um, also today, um, what will be before you is for the board to, um, adopt and, um, establish the millage rate for the twenty twenty-one, um, budget year. Next slide. First, I would like to start off, um, with property tax one-on-one. This may be a refresher for some, but there may be someone out there that just purchased a home and opened their, um, tax bill that says it's not a bill and noticed, um, numbers. So today, I would like to explain some of the numbers, um, millage rate. Um, the millage rate is a, um, tax rate that is applied to your tax, taxable property. It's a calculation, and it comes up to, um, the amount to be paid. Actually, I look at the tax rate as, um, the cost of doing services with the county. So that amount is applied to your taxable property to come up with the amount that you owe the county to continue to run business. For example, you'll see, um, you'll hear millage rate, and in my example, I'm using five mils, it's five dollars per thousand of assessed value. For calculation purposes, you'll see point, zero, zero point zero zero five. And again, the millage rate is, um, the cost to run the county. And also what, um, the money that will be calculated to run the county is also to cover, um, the twenty twenty-one's, um, tax year. We're on, Douglas County is on a calendar year, meaning they run from January through December, so, um, this rate will cover the twenty twenty-one, um, budget. And the increase that's proposed will, um, provide, is gonna provide, um, funding for county, um, services, which include public safety, public works, public health, parks and recreation, judicial, and the growth in economic development. Next slide, please. The millage rate is established by the Board of Commissioners. Um, also, oh, you'll hear rollback. The rollback rate is the millage rate that would raise the same amount of revenue, not expenses, but the actual same amount of revenue as last year, if applied to the current value of the property that was on the last year's, um, tax digest. Next slide. Okay, as I, um, defined the rollback rate, so what's before you? The rollback rate is twelve point zero eight nine. Again, this is, um, the rollback rate, the same amount of revenue as you received last year. And, um, this will generate seven, um, fifty-seven million dollars, and we have recurring revenue, like, for charges for services from parks and rec and, um, the courts, which, um, totals forty-five million. So the fifty-seven million of the property tax and the forty-five as, um, the regular recurring revenue is, will be a total of one oh two, a hundred and two million dollars. Um, and about three weeks ago, when we were in the mid-year, um, review, the Chief, um, Financial Advisor, um, David Corbin, he put up some numbers, um, that stated that were important. One was a hundred and four million dollars, and that's what we're anticipating, um, twenty twenty-one's budget will end, is one oh four, a hundred and four million dollars. And as, as I mentioned, the rollback will generate one hundred and two million. The next is the current millage rate. If the current millage rate is set at twelve point five six three zero, it will generate fifty-nine million in property tax revenue. And again, the forty-five, um, million as the recurring, that will total one oh four, that's a hundred and four million dollars, and that will, um, balance the budget. The current millage rate will balance, um, twenty twenty-one's budget. The next is, um, the recommended millage rate, which is thirteen point five six, uh, three zero. It will generate sixty-four million dollars in property tax, and again, when you add the forty-five million of the regular recurring revenue, you will receive a hundred and nine million dollars. So the, um, recommended millage rate will generate one, a hundred and nine million. Next slide, please. The next slide is a tax comparison, um, and it's based off of, um, a basic homestead property at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You see the first column, if the rollback rate is set, you'll see, um, the county property tax, and this is county only, it would be seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. And if the current rate is, um, established as the millage rate, the, um, your tax bill would be one oh four point three, a hundred and eight, a hundred dollars and three cents, and that's a thirty dollars and thirty-four cent increase when comparing it to the rollback. And if you, and that's an annual call, so if you look at it monthly, it would be, um, about three dollars a month. The next is the proposed, um, millage rate. The tax bill would be eight sixty-eight and three cents, that's eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and three cents. That's an increase of, of ninety-four dollars and thirty-three cents, um, when comparing to the rollback rate. And again, that's an annual cost, and if you divide it by twelve for monthly, it'd be about eight dollars a month. Next slide, please. Where does the money go? So once we receive the money, these are the categories, um, that the money is allocated to. Public safety has the largest piece of the pie, it's thirty-six percent. Then the next is judicial at eighteen percent. You have general government at twenty-seven percent. You have parks and recreation at six. Health and welfare at three percent. And then you have public works at six percent, and you have planning and community development at four percent. Next slide, please. This is the historical property tax digest I would like to, um, bring to your attention. In twenty sixteen, the rollback was used and the county used fund balance to balance the budget. We have in twenty seventeen, the rollback rate was used and the county used fund balance to balance the budget. In twenty eighteen, the rollback was used, the rollback rate was used, and the county used fund balance to balance the budget. Now, in twenty nineteen, the millage stayed the same, and the county generated two million dollars, uh, more in revenue. And as you can see in, um, twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-one, the increase, um, in the millage and also revenue to run the county. Okay, next slide. This is, um, where we are, this is next steps, as, as I mentioned, this is our third public hearing, and, um, today also will be the millage rate, setting of the millage rate. If you have any questions?
Thank you so much, um, Director Miller. Right now, I'm gonna, I'm moving and proceeding to open up the public hearing so we can hear from our citizens, and then certainly the Board of Commissioners will weigh in. Okay? Thank you for your presentation, it was very thorough. Uh, at this time, Board of Commissioners, at your pleasure, um, I will proceed to open the public hearing. This public hearing is now open to allow any citizen here in person or virtually to speak regarding the proposed millage rate increase of one mil as advertised in the legal organ. Do we have any, uh, citizens here publicly or on the line? And clerk, I'll yield to you, you probably have a better idea than me.
Yes, ma'am. Um, we will address anyone in person in the audience here first. Uh, we did have, uh, Mr. Bill Willis that registered to speak this morning regarding the public hearing. So, Mr. Willis, if you want to, go ahead and step up.
Actually, I, I had only, uh, intended to address the issue of legal representation.
Oh, okay.
So, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, are you?
You can still speak if you want to.
So, I, I, well, then I will, I will take this opportunity to simply say-
It has to be-
Your name.
Your name.
And your name, and it's related to the millage rate? Your name?
Oh, no, this is not related to the millage rate.
Well-
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else in the audience here, um, that would like to speak this morning in person? Okay, I will address, uh, those who may be on the call virtually. Uh, we did have two people that signed up. Um, Mr. Barney Young Junior, uh, signed up. Are you on the line, Mr. Young?
Yes, I am, good morning.
Okay, um, if you could just restate your name and address for the record, and then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
Okay, thank you. Hello, I'd like to start by saying good morning to the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Douglas County. My name is Barney Young Junior, and I live at seven zero four nine Rose Lake Circle here in Douglas County. This is actually my second time before the board. I previously addressed the board on June seventh of this year with the concern I had about the millage rate. At that time, I brought up what the millage rate was compared to our neighboring counties, and I respectfully asked the board to consider making that number more competitive in terms of what our neighbors are paying. It saddened me to learn that our millage rate was being proposed to be raised again. I've learned from various sources that there is also a surplus from the previous budget cycle, which was more the likely result of the last rate increase. In addition, I remember this past budget, the fears of a lack of revenue weren't really realized. So I asked a question, if there is a surplus from the projections of the budget, why do we, the citizens of Douglas County, have to endure yet another rate increase? To be frank, there is a perception issue there. We have had highly publicized- We have had highly publicized raises and position rate increases for both elected officials as well as the current county administrative employees. In all, I would estimate that over 90% of the benefit of the pay increases for positions went to the highest 1% of the wage earners in the county. I will admit, I did like that 1%. It made a good argument, but it's probably closer to 5%. Needless to say, the county leaders were the main benefactors. Now, you are asking me to pay higher taxes in light of that. I've lived enough years on this earth to understand that perception isn't reality. But in this case, it makes everything harder to swallow to a lot of folks, whether they admit it or not, because you're asking us to make another sacrifice. All of this, especially knowing that the remaining county employees will eventually need to be made whole with raises. Would that cause us to be in the same place on August 30, August 31, 2022, at a hearing for a new rate increase with a 30-year row? Is that the direction we're heading in? So let's revisit the numbers I presented on June 7. The proposed Douglas County millage rate is 13.563 mils, a one mil increase. In comparison, the proposed 2021 rates, our neighbor to the north, Paulding County, is rolling back its millage rate to 10.31 mils, which is 23.98% lower than Douglas County. Our neighbor to the south, Fulton County, is rolling back its millage rate to 9.55 mils, which is 29.59% lower. Our neighbor to the east, Cobb County, has a millage rate of 11.45 mils, which is 15.58% lower. And finally, our dear neighbor to the west, Carroll County, has a millage rate of 7.67 mils, which is 43.46% lower. Other counties to note, Cherokee County, 8.938, Portside County, 7.896, and Coweta County, 9.836, all of which do have current economic development deals going on also. Altogether, our millage rate is on average 28.15% higher than our neighbors. Again, please consider these numbers as you are voting for this increase. What is the worth that Douglas County citizens pay significantly more than our neighbors in property taxes when we are the only county in our vicinity to significantly raise ours the past two years? So let me make a few final points. Yes, I understand our property taxes are made up of multiple entities. In fact, all of them are raising taxes this year. In turn, to the Board of Education, they laid out specifically what the increase was for. It included a 5% raise for the teachers. I honestly think it is awesome that the county is investing in its educators. Yes, I understand the salaries mentioned above are just a fraction of the total budget. However, when you look at it in totality, you can make an argument that a disturbing pattern. Lastly, I would like to point out that this time, we're in a position where we are raising the millage rate, and we have a protected surplus. Please help me rationalize that 28.15% number versus the benefits the citizens get from another millage rate increase. Thank you for your time and consideration today. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Young. The next citizen who registered to speak was Ms. Nobe Mitchell. Ms. Mitchell, are you on the line?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning. If you could go ahead and restate your name and address.
Good morning.
I am, I, and many of my constituents are asking that you vote no on this proposed property tax millage rate increase. You have not allowed property, the property tax increase from 2020 to be realized. The increase you voted on a year ago, which netted me 40% increase in my taxes, $600 increase. My neighbors have also a substantial increase. They are already working two jobs. In addition, another neighbor about a half mile away indicated that her increase was about $1,000. She was almost in tears. The consensus is that your constituents are not being considered when there are further discussions about increasing the property taxes, millage rate, again, back to back. While not curbing your own spending, while not curbing, curbing your own spending with regards to given increases with, with county workers, with public officials, as well as not counting the money, the tax increase will net the county once Mr. Greg Baker collected. Please consider not taking the increase, please consider taking the increase off the table by adding and not adding more burden to the property owners currently. 40% increase over one year, 40% increase over one year. Also, with my neighbor, $1,000 increase in her taxes over one year. Many people in between, above and below. Let's continue to make Douglas County a place where individuals can, of all incomes, of all incomes, please consider people that don't make as much money as you individual commissioners do, that can live, work, and play here in Douglas County. People moved here because of the affordability of Douglas County. And I was listening to liberty and justice for all. Please take that $100 from my 600 that I may have to pay this year. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Is there anyone else on the line that would like to speak this morning regarding the millage rate?
Um, yes, can you hear me?
A yes. Can you please state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Okay, yes, my name is Ryan Goddard. I'm at 7395 Mobley Court in Winston. And I really can't speak any more than the first caller did. My goodness, that was some good facts that he laid out. But I do want to address something that Ms. Commissioner Carthian said in the last public hearing. And it had to do with the assistants making $55,000, which is, I know, a sore topic for a lot of people, but I just want to lay out some numbers. So, the average administrative assistant in Georgia makes $38,000. We're paying ours $55,000. The average police officer in Georgia makes $51,000, and we pay ours $40,000. It seems like we have that backwards. I'm just not sure, but it seems like we have it backwards. And I actually, Coca-Cola, an executive assistant at Coke starts off at $56,000. And we're starting off our administrative assistant for a part-time commissioner at $55,000 plus benefits. And I know, and the comment that I'm referring to is that Commissioner Carthian said, well, it's only $15,000 times three, which is only $45,000, which in a $104 million budget is not that much money. And I understand that. I'm a pretty smart person. But my thought is, is if you can't even get $45,000 right, why would I want you to be dealing with $104 million? So, it just, it just baffles me. I'm not sure. And also, the next thing is, none of the other two callers said, we're, we're still in a pandemic. You raised the taxes last year astronomically during a pandemic, and now you want to do it again while we're still in the pandemic. I can't imagine any other county out there that's raised their millage rate both years. This is just, it's, it's absurd. And then, you want us to pay that money even though we have a surplus in the budget? As the caller said, Ms. Commissioner Gaiter said, we have a surplus. So, I'm not sure why we need to keep raising it. I was set to give the top 1%, like the guy said, all these raises that we're giving. But again, we're in a pandemic. You know what? I don't think you can ask any constituent, Democrat, Republican, they're, they do not want to pay any more property taxes. All right? So we have to not do this. We have to stay with our current rate or even go back to the rollback rate. So we have a surplus. Let's use that money. And, and also, the last thing I want to say is, is I feel like sometimes we live in the past way too much. Do I think that we need a Taj Mahal of a jail? Do I think the nicest building in Douglas County should be the jail? No. But that choice was made, it was over 10 years ago. It seems like every meeting we go to, we have an argument over the jail. I'm pretty sure all commissioners made mistakes. They probably want to look back and say, I don't want to do that. We should have done that. I mean, we have a bus system that loses money every single day. So if we want to go there, we could talk about the bus system. So, but let's stop living in the past. We want to look into the future, and the future doesn't look bright if we keep raising our property taxes. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak this morning?
Okay, Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you. Okay, thank you so much. I certainly would like to thank all the citizens who took the time to come and speak, but certainly if there are no other voices to be spoken, and I'm just trying to make sure this public hearing is now closed. With that being said, Board of Commissioners certainly want to give you an opportunity to certainly weigh in on some of the comments you heard, and then we can talk, and then I'll call for a motion to vote. Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Note, and I appreciate citizen input. It's always good to hear from citizens and, so I'll respond as Madam Chair said in response to the comments, because it was a hearing. I do appreciate the articulation of the, of the first person, first citizen. And as we, we compare ourselves conveniently sometimes to make our points. And I look at surrounding counties, I'm like, those are all accurate facts. However, and I want to bring home a point right, all the other counties are lowering in light of the pandemic. But for the past five years, we, we lowered. Then we had to raise. So the point is, we were inverted to begin with. It was a flawed policy that we had to correct. Duly noted. That was the whole point. Second point. So, second point, so you've got to do what you have to do. Second point is about use of funds. And again, you've got a millage rate that covers your M&amp;O and the basic things that was covered. And it was, it was duly noted. It's about choice. And we can isolate certain roles versus this role. Well, you've always had a choice every year to make everything equitable. But don't pick on this class of worker in light of everybody else. The whole point was to make the point. All right? Second point, no, third point I want to address, which is the economic development component. It's important that we have a public debate. I need staff to hear this. All staff. This is when I say, y'all got to get in the ring on this. Staff wanted to advance what they wanted to advance, and we're trying to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And what's being suggested was not so much as a, this was an extra raise on top of what we've done. Right? So the extra mil or 5 million had to do with economic development. Now, to the citizens that weighed in on the master plan for Lee Road and that, that, what we're talking about, like, okay, well, here's a funding mechanism. I'm the one, I'll take credit for, for pushing this for the public. Now, we're going to have a public debate on this. I'm not going to carry this for staff and try to make this my idea, but I will be willing to entertain it. That's important for you to know how this came about. I know what happened last year. I was the architect of it. I get it. We had to do what we had to do. But now we're being asked for the fulfillment, like, okay, we just came through this, but now let's go for it with this. And I'm like, I get it, but y'all know what y'all asking staff? See, staff is insulated from certain decisions. Right? Because we're the ones that have to take the public hate. But it's like, no, y'all going to get in the ring on this. Why am I going to put five, put up $5 million, one mil? And so we have to ask these questions in what I call the public light. It's called a public debate. Right? So they're like, okay, to do that, like, guys, we could fund it this way, but this is what it's going to cost. Now, should we, we increase the property taxes to do this? Have a public debate. But staff is personally, we got these deals, we got these economic, like, okay, you're putting us in a bind. But okay, we're not going to put us in a bind, because we get to make the right choice. In other words, like, no, we're going, there has to be another way. There has to be another way. But I'm not afraid of the conversation in the public. Don't be afraid. That's what it's supposed to be, public debate. Had we done this offline in the shadows, then we come out, like, we're going to do this, then, okay, then we now have done a disservice. Right? Is there another funding option? Maybe a splot, sales tax versus a property tax, probably a better vehicle, but okay. But this is back to staff who try to push their, like, okay, I get you, what y'all trying to get accomplished, but we can use economic development, we can use this money. That, that economic development went straight to the general funds, like, oh, y'all are not being sincere. Y'all are really not showing what we're going to really use this one mil for. But okay, let's have this conversation. Don't do that. That's what this is about. We have high-level bureaucrats that are proposing stuff to us. Our job is to come in every now and then and say, what y'all up to? To bless it. To say that that's a good idea. Don't confuse our role as elected officials with the check and balance to the administration. So duly noted. It's important that we understand our roles. So I'm looking at this like, okay, I'm willing to have the conversation, and I'm going to bring it home. And I, again, I do appreciate the citizens' input. And I personally could not support a mil increase in light of, because there's, there's other paths forward. Right? It would have been easy to levy against the citizens right now to accomplish that economic development deal. And that's why, like, ah, that needs to be closer to, the public need to hear that. Now, this is what they were talking about. It's to fund the economic development component of this. Okay, it had nothing to do with the M&amp;O and the daily operation stuff. It would have been strictly dedicated to economic development. The question is, do you use the property taxes to fund economic development? Yes, it's being done in other places, but should it be done here? Right? Should it be done here? Or do we use something like sales tax, a splot, to fund that? But I get it. It's choice. The last point I want to make, and again, these are, these are very good topics of discussion, using the millage rate. So my, my question then becomes, okay, we've got this excess growth of, what, 2.5%, 2.5 million? My question to the administration is that, what are y'all going to do with that excess growth? I've made my point, and I appreciate the citizens' conversations, like, yeah, when, when are we going to pay the citizens? I mean, pay our employees. Right? And now, I, I, my aide is not an admin. I think there's some confusion when they keep putting up these topics, like, go look at Fulton, go look at Gwinnett, go look at the cab, and look at what their aides do. Their aides have executive assistants. It's a different structure. We've outgrown our current structure. I get it. But that argument is somewhat, I keep, like, okay, we can argue that all day long, but that's not the point. This is, this is, this is a nice-sized county, which brings to the last point that Madam Gaiter brought up, and I think it is important. The reason that we had to raise the two things, one, obviously, we know what we're going through, the growth, all that. We, we had a flawed policy, we were rolling back. But the second thing is that the values are not what they should be on that commercial. It's like, I, I haven't been proven that, okay, I get, I get the residential is probably pretty solid. They're carrying the burden, but like, y'all ain't, y'all ain't doing this commercial right. This, this industrial right, like, okay, I, I question the numbers in the sense that y'all got too much on the, on the floor. Y'all are doing the old advocate's way of evaluating assets, and I know we're getting software. We got a new leader, don't get it wrong, to the citizens, we got a new leader. He's getting his mind around it. We gave him, obviously, new software to sort of go after this. So we'll get that fixed. But this, this is how the county has been run. It's been run this way. It's been allowed, it's been in denial of its own, like, you know, this thing is, is so antiquated. And I appreciate the last statement about our history. Well, I'm sorry, I'm, will always remember my history so I can plan, I got to know my current state. Don't ever forget your history. You need comparables. Always remember your history. All right? So you know where you're at today, and therefore you can extend forward. But pretend like the history didn't happen, is, I could never do that. You got to use those data points, they're called comparables. What was our prior? You look, you look back, whether it's wars, what did we learn in our last war? What did we learn? The question is, when you burn that type of cash, and then you wait for, hopefully, the splot in the future will allow you to be reimbursed? No, you need to learn the lesson. It's not so much as, as the ideological issue of incarceration, let that go. It's, it wasn't that, it was a math problem. It wasn't that. It was a math problem. It was a policy round monetary. Stay there. If we're going to argue the right argument, it was all about financial policy. But nevertheless, I wanted to frame that, but Madam Chair, I mean, we've heard the public hearing. I've weighed in, and I'm pretty much done. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioner want to speak?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Carthen, you have the floor.
Thank you. Rosalyn, can you address what the Commissioner from District Four spoke on? Because yesterday, when I received your email, it stated that we did have a growth, actually, an increase. Is that correct?
On the total digest, yes, but Commissioner Guyder asked me to break it out in assessment, reassessments, and the growth. And when I looked at the calculations, when she questioned, she was like, that's awfully low. So I went back, and the calculation is correct, but I'm forward at the information. So I can only calculate based on the information. And what I did notice, it was, it was a decrease in every description of real, personal, the motor vehicle, the heavy-duty equipment, and usually, like last year, I went back to take a look at last year, and the total of the other changes or the growth was about forty-four million, but now it's only nine. So, so the calculation, I can only do a calculation based off of numbers, yeah.
That are given to you.
That is correct.
Got you. Is Mr. Balfour, can you, can you come up to speak to that? Because if we look at all the financials in regards to this county, we are in a good position only because we did raise the millage rate, which we really just did not have a choice last year. We really didn't. It was either lay off, you know, sixty percent of the staff, or ask the citizens to chip in more. And so, you know, in regards to that. So it put us in a position where now we are actually balancing the budget. One, without having to use our general fund. Two, without having to borrow money. And in this year, we may even be in a position where we don't even have to borrow tens. So I tell you, this, this board right here did the right thing, regardless of what other people may think. We are actually looking at the numbers, and I do want to correct something. I'm part-time on paper, but I do not do part-time work, and anybody out here will tell you. I am a full-time commissioner. It's just part-time on paper. That's for Fulton County, Gwinnett County, Douglas County, I think all of us up here, minus maybe one, does full-time work. So just want to put that out there. But can you speak to us a little bit about the, what you are doing, looking at the numbers, moving forward with the software, and where the county looks in terms of growth, just briefly?
Yes, I am currently, my, my numbers, by the way, I am looking at the consolidation sheets for 2020 versus 2021, and I'm seeing one point four five percent growth, real growth, as opposed to what is being said. So I was not privy to the numbers of the digest submitted for last year, but I look at the system that I inherited, and I'm looking at the consolidation sheets, and I'm showing a one point four five percent. So it's all about the numbers. I can only use the numbers that I have to my privilege, and I'm showing real growth of one point four five percent. And we do have a system now approved that myself and the tax assessor will have the same numbers. We will have one database, so I'll be doing the assessments, and we have the access to a better income analysis software. So we can now look at income and value in properties. There are three methods, cost, market, and income. We have not been using, we are only doing income for one category of properties right now. We started out, when I, when I came, they were doing income on apartments. So we should look at all properties using all three methods, and we should use income for income generating properties. So it is my intention to start moving income generating properties to income. And this, as Commissioner Robinson alluded to, will affect our income values. So going forward, we will be looking more at income valuation for income generating properties.
Thank you so much, Mr. Balfour. I just wanted that stated for the record, and so that people can hear that. We are not up here adding taxes just to be adding taxes. We pay taxes here, too. And so that's the only way we can get to sit up here, is because we are a part of the community. So in light of what you stated, in light of the situation that we are in, we are in a surplus. So it would be my recommendation that we not raise the tax, but just use what we have in light of our current forecast, that we will be using an income model that will allow our commercial properties and our income properties to actually pay their fair share of taxes. Thank you. And with that, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthen. Any other comments, huh? Commissioner Guyder.
Yes. Chief Appraiser, please come back. So you're going to be sending us some NODs. You're going to be adding values to the 2021 digest because of the errors that you have found.
No, ma'am. Our digest is final, and it's current, and I will not be sending NODs. And we will have NODs from time to time on personal property. But our digest for 2021, as it is, is balanced, and it's, it's pretty much okay without much NOD. So no, I'm not looking to send a lot of NODs.
So you're saying that you did not leave anything off the digest. When you did the comparison, where was the big difference?
I am not understanding what difference you're speaking about.
Okay. When I was tax commissioner, I always compared the current digest to the last digest, and if there was some big increase, I would question the assessor, why this big increase? And they would explain, well, we had this, this, and this. So are you saying we never compared this digest to last year's?
Yes, ma'am. That's what Rosalyn just presented, this.
You're just now doing it, though, after our three meetings?
No, I did not.
Okay, Rosalyn did it.
I did a comparison, and I am showing a growth. I use my numbers from the tax assessor system, and I'm showing one point four five percent in real growth and five percent in inflationary growth.
The figure she gave me was point two oh growth.
That's correct, and I am not privy to those numbers. Those were last year's.
There's something wrong. There's something wrong.
I am not disputing that, but I, I can only use the numbers I have.
I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. All right, any other discussion? Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Excuse me, tax.
Tax Assessor, if you could come back.
Come back. And I don't know if the tax commissioner, he could probably come up and have a conversation with us as well. First of all, can you, for the general public, what are NODs?
Not on digest.
Okay, because we don't, some of us don't kind of have a clue what that acronym is. So thank you for that. But with that, you have three approaches that you're using, and I'll get to my further question. One is income approach, and give us the other two.
Market approach, income approach, and cost approach.
Got it. And you've, we've allowed and given you the funding source to allow you to actually have that approach, which exclude real property, to find the value that we, from the commercial side of things. Please, again, to the general public, explain that process of what you're going to be doing, and how we're going to get there, and rectify those values when it comes to commercial.
For want of a better word, I would not say rectify, but it's also, market, cost, and income are three approaches to value. But it's, the Department of Revenue highly recommends that we use the income approach for income generating properties. In Douglas, we have not been doing so. So we, last year, the former Chief Appraiser moved apartments to the income approach. And not totally, but some apartments are being used valued on income. It is my intention to, we have a more robust income module on the Tyler Technologies system. So it is my intention to move, once we have implemented Tyler Technologies, to move over the bulk of the income generating properties to the income model, so we can realize the true values of our, our income properties. And this will facilitate fairness and uniformity across the, the commercial field.
Understood, and my apologies for my choice of wording. However, I'll take yours. However, you're going to take a team of folk, because you don't have the staff to pull off trying to even just get the true value or values of our various commercial properties. So go ahead.
Yes. The first step is to have a total revaluation done on our commercial properties.
Correct.
So once we get the total revaluation down, it will set the foundation for us to continue with right valuing our commercial properties.
Correct, and that's going to be a big help for you to get your arms around where we probably should be. And we won't know that until you kind of dig in and start finding out, because there could be some that are too high, too low, or in between. But whatever that is, we'll get there, and we'll have the, I guess, the real number of the brick and mortar.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Now, the one thing that you and I've had conversation, and I'm just, only just so we can let the general public know that we've talked about things such as the personal property evaluation, that there's a need there as well, correct? Because there's other income that we're probably missing out on, but we've got to take the right steps to get there. We just can't, quite there, and as my mom would say, eat the entire elephant, we got to take bites of the elephant to get there, so.
That is correct. So going forward, we'll also be looking at personal property. Madam Guyder did say that also, so yes, we will. We need to perform audits there as well.
Right. And, and we're not just doing this to upset the apple cart of the commercial side of things. We just want everybody to pay their fair share.
That is correct.
Okay.
It's for fairness and uniformity. I'm guided by the Department of Revenue, and that's their guidelines for us to be fair and uniform.
That's correct. And I just don't want the general public to think that we're after now trying to keep our taxes in line with others by going after the commercial side of things and increasing their taxes, because that wouldn't be fair.
Not at all.
Okay, okay. So that's not your goal?
No, it's numbers for me also. There are numbers that I need to meet for the digest to be accepted by the Department of Revenue.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you. And again, job well done. I know there's some other pieces of the puzzle that needs to happen outside of just the mere fact of doing an external audit with another team that you're doing the audit with, with the help of or the assistance of. But one last question, how will you and your team assist in this? On top of, how will you be prepared, because once they're gone and they've done the audit, then you're moving forward in years to come? So how will we benefit by spending that large sum of money to get you at least in order, or at least in the right, based off the state numbers or requirement?
We will be shadowing the revaluation team throughout the process. And after the revaluation, it will set the base for our values, so we will be able to manage going forward. Yes, I too need to restructure to get additional staff. However, I, once we have a good foundation, we'll be able to move forward with, you know, my projection is two or three additional staff. Thanks.
Understood, and that's where I was going, as our conversation stated, is that there's a need there to make sure that you're going to continue to be efficient versus having this team of folk to kind of come across and get our numbers correct, and then only to find that it'll drop back off only because you didn't have the staff to keep up with that. Because this county has grown, grown a lot, and what you was handed was interesting enough. And you came on onboard and embraced it, but now I think there's some other things that's needed, and this board has to be realistic about trying to help you get there and not basically expect you to get there based off this, this first move of about two-hundred-plus thousand dollars.
That is correct, Commissioner Mitchell. I appreciate you. Thank you, sir.
You got it. Thank you again. Okay, so outside of that, we're good. Thank you. So let me also, I know, I'm good. Thank you, thank you. We had a couple of individuals that talked about, we can't, we can't live in the past, but I agree, we still got to talk about kind of what happened in the past. So just a brief history, five, six years ago, we, we did roll back. We did kind of put the county in a better millage rate perspective. And I, and again, I too, as I've always stated, would not have raised, I mean, rolled back the millage rate, would have left it where it was, because that's not an increase in the millage rate. However, that rollback does affect you, because now you've reduced your millage rate. But if my calculation is correct, and I don't know if Rosalyn, if you may have any of these numbers, but I think my calculation came up with those five or six years with about probably seven to nine million dollars in the course of those years. But that, too, was all during and prior to a recession and the bubble bursting with real estate and so on. So yes, I too benefited from all of that. However, we, in turn, a year or so ago, decided to raise the millage rate, because now we're trying to play catch-up. But I'll say this much about Commissioner Mitchell. I've never been a proponent for increasing a millage rate. As long as I've been from the city government, up until now, that I've ever raised or voted for an increase. But I understand the need of my community as to what their requests are. And I always say this at my coffee conversations, at my town hall meetings. If you want these things, let's say you want to see your police, law enforcement, and others at a rate of thirty-five or fifty dollars an hour, that's fine. But how do you fund it? How do you pay for it? The citizens voted for a splot, whether it's the tier-one splot, and don't want to go in that past, or a current splot that we're dealing with right now. But I always talk about the brick and mortar, that we seem to forget when it comes to the operational side of this, when that lever is pulled, when you got a senior citizen center at Lithia Springs, and now you need operational cost. Ms. Gilchrist is now, and thank you for a job well done with those senior citizen center and the new one that we're dealing with, that the cost associated with the one penny splot that you so desired as a citizen of Douglas County. What about the community center, fire station, the animal shelter? I mean, the list goes on, that you made the request to us as commissioners. But you have to also understand there's a cost associated with all of this, and that cost is operational costs. Now, it's great that you and all of us and others who come into our county paid for this particular brick and mortar. But at the end of the day, you got to also keep in mind, and I know it's a constant for me, as a constant reminder to say to the citizens of Douglas County, yes, I would love to have all of these things. And I also make mention about the cost associated with it once you get it. So I think this board has done great by that which, hanging close to a great millage rate. I too don't think there's a need for an increase now, because I think there's other means of getting through this, this particular session now without increasing it by a mill. Because I've had conversations with my colleagues and others, I think we can do something not just better, but different. I think we can do something not just better, but different. I think we've got some additional funding sources that we can look at. If we don't rollback, for sure, we'll have some funds. And I think we can still look at these economic development side of things that's gonna be beneficial to the county, to include, we've got new growth. We've got assessed values. We've got the, the tax commissioners and the Board of Assessors now trying to look at reevaluating commercial properties. But we still got a long way to go, and we've got additional funding sources that will be out there that we can use. So don't, don't fall short from being realistic when you look at this mill, which I couldn't support because I think we've got other means. So I too, and I, and I think I hear my colleagues saying the same thing, that we too do not see that mill as an increase that's needed because we've got other funding sources that we can use to help not only our employees, but our citizens. So in that vein, I'll yield back, Madam Chair, but I think we've got a, we've got a long way to go. But I think we're going in the right direction, and I yield, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Any other comments from the board? Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson, then when you finish, I'll close out.
Yeah, to frame this, which is what, what I'm hearing, two things. And I think it's back to the value. Commissioner Mitchell, thank you for facilitating that with the Chief Appraiser or Tax Assessor. Remember, it, it's about the value of that mill. And I think we say ours is worth about five million. That's five million per year over time. And, and again, we like to go compare ourselves to the, the more rural western counties, which is convenient. But we forget, we fail to look at ourselves to the east, which are different values. We're split, we're right down the middle, I get it. But look at it like this, you think about Cherokee or some of the other counties where the value of the mill is like 12 million, 15 million. It's the value of the assets. But a million-dollar fire truck cost here is the same million dollar over there. You get it? It's, it's the value, that's what, it's about the value of the mill. So as our, as our values go up, obviously, I mean, it, it, it's the value. We're not, we're only raising the mil, the mileage rate to make up the, our, our values are soft. I agree with it to a certain extent, tighten up that commercial, and I know they're working on it. I think there is too much burden on the residential side, only because the commercials that y'all, it, it's been allowed. We didn't have the talent that was looking at that the right way. Right, so I mean, don't be in denial of the history of how this has historically been done. You gotta look at and say, like, gosh, y'all have a lot on the table, and you've got this big balloon here. We had no choice last year. We didn't do that lightly, oh, we went kicking and screaming. But this thing was like, okay, gosh, you have no choice. Now we've level set it, it's smooth, leave it alone. It's like the feds, don't tinker with the interest rate, don't tinker with the mileage rate. Don't do it for political reasons. Let it be static, use other funding mechanisms. But again, it goes back to the values. I, I hear Madam Geiger, I hear Commissioner Mitchell, get them values right. It's about the values. But what, what I'm hearing, Madam Chair, then to close out, that we're, I, I need Rosalyn to come up and frame then. It sounds like we're not going to do the mill for economic development. So what are we saying as a motion to move this forward? And then is the county administrator out there? Is she up here?
Yes, she's here.
Okay, hey, welcome. I, I got a question for you, which is, okay, we're gonna, we're taking the, the mill off for economic development, which means there is some excess that's coming, we're about to amend the budget. What are we gonna do with that excess? Seeing that with any budget, you know, whether it's a brand-new budget first of year or, or what we call the BIR review, or even in this mid-year, what do you see the use of that funds for just framing? The use of the excess?
Want me to go ahead, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Good morning, everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, great discussion. As I have observed in the county, since I've been here, I've, I've concluded a few things. Every department that I've met with, every constitutional officer, every elected official has consistently bemoaned the ability to retain staff. The last time our staff got a cost of living increase was in 2019. In reality, we all know that, you know, the cost of a gallon of gas, a loaf of bread, everything has gone up significantly since then. I think we have to take a hard look at how we compensate our employees across the county. So if there is, and, and I do believe, you know, we have tightened our belts considerably, and we are trending under budget, on a very lean budget. But we've also done that somewhat on the backs of, of the people who work for us. And so I think that if given the opportunity, what I would be looking at is how we handle our compensation issues across the county. So let's say a quarter of what additional is available, I would consider that to be something that we need to think about. The other thing is lots of discussion in the last several weeks about grants. How do we leverage grants? How do we draw down money? How do we manage grants? But a key component is we have to be able to match those grants. So I would like to see us use perhaps a quarter of the money in reserve for the purpose of matching grants should they become available. The third category is contingency. The one thing we know about a global pandemic is we're in a global pandemic and things are shifting. The only thing that we know for sure is things are shifting literally under our feet. Every day, something new arises. And I would like us to be able to have funding and contingency that gives this board some flexibility. And lastly, I think not only by policy, but as a matter of, of practical, I would like for us to put a quarter aside for capital and deferred maintenance. Part of the challenges we have is, you know, something happens at the courthouse and the air conditioning goes down. Well, thousands of people use this every day. There's no possible way for us to operate this facility with no air conditioning, so. And we have 80 facilities out there, most of them have systems that are beyond their useful life. How can we start to address some of these deferred maintenance items? So ultimately, you are the policymakers. I will, I will only be able to bring you recommendations of what I believe is the best direction to take. But at the end of the day, you'll make the policy decisions. But that would be just sort of my initial reaction to what happens with excess at the end of this current fiscal year. And also frame us for 2022. I yield, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, so let me finish out my statement. Thank you, Madam Administrator. So let me make sure I get this right. So the excess, which I think is around 2 million, just for the sake of the conversation, you're suggesting that you're framing the use of that would be 25% or half million dollars is for compensation, 25% is for grants, 25%, which is another half million dollars, 25% is for contingency. And then the final 25% or another half million dollars is for general maintenance or things associated with capital. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
All right, so half million dollars each, I'm fine with that. I mean, it's just a framing, it's not a budget moment, it's just an amendment of the budget. We just wanted to give direction that it's just not sitting in cash, you know, just sitting there without intended use. So that's all I need, Madam Chair, I yield.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Okay, thank you all so much for just taking the time to, first of all, Board of Commissioners, to state your case to the citizens, respectfully to the citizens of Douglas County and to our county government, thank you for holding the line in 2020 during the most unprecedented pandemic in modern history. This board rolled back taxes for five consecutive years at the tune of $9 million. Boy, we were having a ball, rolling the back, citizens noticing a decrease on their taxes. But something happened in our life that was beyond myself and the Board of Commissioners' control, which was a pandemic that only God controls that. But I just want to let you know, on a personal note, I fell on my knees, kicking and screaming all the way in when it was proposed to me by our chief financial advisor that, Madam Chair, if you don't do something, something will do something to you, which meant that the county would collapse. We were 15 points down in the Super Bowl, and I'm just gonna use that analogy. And in order to get across the line, we have to increase the taxes. We initially talked about a 32% increase. I came back and said, what about 18%? And of course, the chief financial advisor, Mr. Corbin, said, Madam Chair, I advise the governor. And that's who I advise. He said, I advise him and other elected officials all over the United States. And he said, I'm just gonna be fair and honest with you, 18% just won't get it. I said, what is the least that we can bring in? And 27.8% was his recommendation. So that was the proposal to the citizens of Douglas County, so I thank you, just thank you. But we didn't just increase your taxes. I put some pressure on the 18, which is the employees. We, we doubled down on expenses, and we cut those expenses by $11 million. And so that meant that we had a, a five-day furlough, but we were, we were smart enough to know that we had 20, instead of 20, how many pay periods? 24 pay periods, it was 25, we had 26 that year. No, instead of 26 pay periods, we had 27. So that offset the furlough. That was window dressing, that was window dressing because our staff didn't miss a beat. And I know it was publicized, you furloughed and all that. But we had, every 10 years in this county, the citizens, the, the staff receives 27 pay periods. And it was just great timing. So they received 26 pay periods that year, so. And then also just an extra week because we only furloughed five days. So I just, I just, again, thank the citizens for trusting me as the chairman of this county. Certainly, I'm telling you, I cried like a baby because I didn't want to raise your taxes. I don't believe in, if I could, because I have a heart of gold, I'll rollback every year if I could. But I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take a position with my fellow commissioners today. And certainly, I've been hearing the, the noise of the citizens, and that 1%, that one mill is too much. And I agree with the Board of Commissioners, one mill, we don't, that's unnecessary roughness for our citizens at this time. So with that being said, I agree with just leaving the, the mill, the mileage rate as is. Right now, everything is steady, delta variant is upon us. We don't know which direction this ship is going. I appreciate the federal government for allowing us to be on the ventilator. I feel like we're walking a little bit, we are at least mobile. But, but if the federal government decide to shift, we don't know which way this thing is gonna go. So I'm gonna ask the citizens to just, I'm gonna use this word, and then I'll close out and call for a motion. The, the word is steady right now. We just want to just stay where we are, nobody breathe, nobody move, just, just be still. As God would say, just be still and know that I'm God. So we're gonna do that, and I'm gonna ask this Board of Commissioners. Certainly, I, I don't know, Clerk, what you had in, in, for me to call in terms of a, a motion. But did you have it set up, or do I need to amend?
We actually have separate items on the agenda, Chairman, under resolutions to adopt the Board of Education's mileage rate and then to adopt the county's mileage rate.
Well, I have to adopt the mileage rate first, that's what I'm saying, I need to do that first, part of this public hearing?
No, ma'am, it's, it would be number nine.
Okay, all right. Well, Board of Commissioners, and I'm, I'll do those separate. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt or accept the resolution to adopt the Board of Education's 2021 mileage rate?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, Board? We have a motion and a second, please prepare to cast your votes.
Chairman, I believe this will be a hand vote since it was advertised as being higher.
Okay, okay.
Oh, no, this is the Board of Education, I'm sorry. Sorry, yeah, sorry.
So can we, can we cast a vote, electronic?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries five oh, Chairman.
All right, Board of Commissioners, we have a five oh unanimous vote, and the motion carries. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is resolution. And what I'm gonna do, Clerk, I'll just read it, and we'll take a manual vote for this one because you.
Yes, ma'am, you'll have to state what the mileage rate, what the proposed mileage rate will be.
And Rosalyn, if you could, what is the current mileage rate now? I just want to make sure, don't. Yeah, yeah, please, read the resolution. Thank you. Thank you.
And this is for the current mileage rate?
Yes.
Be it resolved that the 2021 Douglas County General Fund tax levy be as followed. Maintenance and operation of Douglas County General Fund, 16.276. The local option sales tax rollback is 3.713, which nets for a total of Douglas County General Fund mileage rate of 12.563. The 2020 insurance premium tax in the full amount of $7,654,562.27 has been earmarked for county fire protection in the unincorporated area of the county, adopted by the Douglas County Commission this 31st day of August 2021.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, you have heard the resolution, certainly with the mileage rate at 12, to remain, and we're not changing it, it will remain at 12.563. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Some move.
Go ahead, give it a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Carthon, a second by Vice Chairman Robinson. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Vice Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
Yeah, just with the condition that according to the county administrator's point that the, the excess will use according to the framework she gave earlier, 25% according to four categories. That's it, thank you.
Board, are you okay with that condition?
Yes.
Yes, and it was just a basic framing with some percentages, nothing set in stone, correct? Okay, got you. All right, any other questions, Board of Commissioners? We have a motion and a second on the floor, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. We have a four. Okay, we have a four oh vote, I mean, four one vote, four to.
Second?
I didn't see.
And?
I did not raise my hand.
She did not.
All right, that's the first, yeah. That's before, and then you gotta ask the other question.
You got it right.
Is she against?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna do that, okay. Do we have, we have four, that's four. Anyone against this mileage rate staying the same? Okay, one. Okay, Board of Commissioners, it's a four one vote, and the motion carries. So we have four yeses and one no, for the mileage rate to stay the same. So with that being said, the motion carries for the mileage rate to stay the same at 12.563. Thank you. All right, Board of Commissioners, we're gonna move on to tab number 10. And tab number 10, got, Board of Commissioners, before we move into the tab and before I read it, I just wanted to make a comment to one of, one of the statements that was made about this particular contract. It is not an auto-renewal contract, this is reviewed annually, vetted and voted on by the Board of Commissioners. So this is, is not just a regular contract. So we just want to make that certain and known to, to the record. Board of Commissioners, certainly, at your pleasure, you called that we could have Thompson and Hein come forward. But before I do that, Board of Commissioners, I want to say, Board of Commissioners, being that this full body has not taken official action, and I made that clear yesterday with Mr. Thompson and Hein Corporation, just wanted to make that clear. We have not taken action to remove the existing county attorney as required by Douglas County Code of Ordinance 2-44. Nor has this body provided the existing county attorney with an official letter from the Douglas County Board of Commissioners deeming our desire to end the general counsel slash attorney, county attorney services with him as written and required in the first paragraph of the contract that the county Board of Commissioners negotiated with him. I would like to make a motion, and certainly is at your pleasure, Board, to table the new, this, a new business item in, in tab number 10 for the, in, in today's agenda for a definite period to allow this full body, which is the Board of Commissioners, to point and/or remove the county attorney in the proper manner as mandated in the Douglas County Code of Ordinance 2-44. And certainly, that is my motion that we table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay. I was going to say, any discussion? Vice Chair. Yes, Vice Chairman, you have the floor.
Right. And while I may not disagree with the table, I think respectfully, I disagree with the interpretation of the standing of our county attorney. This is not about the county attorney. Don't confuse the person with the firm. This is important. It is a service agreement. We have never appointed a county attorney since I've been here. We've contracted a county attorney for legal services. It's not the same as being appointed that's being referenced that has to do with the current county administrator or county clerk. There is a distinguishable difference. It's on both sides. That is the flaw. I'm willing to pause just for clarity. Just for clarity. However, the county attorney has been duly given that his contract ends at the end of the year based on a normal procurement process. That's important. The Board of Commissioners passed a policy last year for all service agreements. Anybody over five years regarding to professional services, their contracts are automatically canceled in their rebid. Even the legal organ is not above that position, that policy. Distinguish the difference. We need to distinguish the difference of what we're talking about. So with that being said, that the county attorney has been duly notified and served and that firm properly responded, properly responded to the RFP process and participated. And because they participated, they understand what it means. Now, I get what we're going through right now. It's, it's more political than legal. It's political. Right, so that means there needs to be a counter to, to the argument. There is no dictate that this is what it is. That cannot happen with this. Right, so I acknowledge, I respect, um, but based on what I perceive, you've been given notice, so at the end of this year, we will not have a county attorney if we don't appoint this other person or anybody else. The clock ticks. It's already been done. It's not, I can pick that up. Well, it's already done based on our policy. Now, if in fact that what, it, it goes outside of this and there needs to be a true interpretation, and that's what it's intended, if it has to go to a court system, it will do what it do. But right now, there is no, it's this way. That's important. But respectfully to my peers, um, the, the process of procuring is what it is. Thank you, staff, that y'all stood your ground and did your jobs. You know, there's no Trump moving on to our Secretary of State. Y'all did the same, y'all stood. You don't get to get moved on and told how to do your job when it comes to procurement. That's the stuff that you get in trouble for. Now, you held. You followed the procurement process for service agreement. Got to get that a record. You did your job. Right, it, it can't be just waived and stopped. You can't go down there and tamper with that. That's like the President tampering with the elections. What do y'all, you kidding me? I'm saving us from ourselves. Leave that alone. Don't be tampering with the procurement process. It was solid. It did what it did. The question simply comes between an appointed and a contracted. Uh, and so if it needs to be settled outside of us, because there will not be probably too much of a change in beliefs on this. It will not move. And I respect that. Everybody has a position. So, Madam Chair, I'm with the, you got a motion for the table, a first and a second? I, I, I yield it back.
Any other discussion, board?
Madam Chair. Yes, uh, is, uh, Director Evers here? Evers, I'm sorry. Hello, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, uh, looking at the FEM from March, no, um, yeah, March the fifteenth, um, you were asked by, uh, the Commissioner from the third district, Commissioner Carthon, uh, are we in keeping in, in line with our policy? And your reply is that we do not have a policy on this. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So they can shout what they want to or they can try to put the guilt on somebody else or whatever, but we do not have an official policy. We can correct that if we, this board so pleases, but right now, we do not have that policy. You can look at the FEMS, you can look at the minutes, mostly the FEMS because, uh, the FEMS actually show the whole discussion. There was a friendly, uh, contingency for voting for a, um, a consent agenda, but that was to be followed up on. It was never followed up on. So change the policy if you want to. Um, this is not politics like it's touted every time someone opens his mouth. This is not politics. If we want to change the, uh, uh, legal representation for this board, we can change it. But don't, don't sit there and say, it's our policy. We do not have a policy in place. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Evers.
Board of Commissioners, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. And Lisa Manuel, I know, okay, we have a motion and a s- Yes, Commissioner Carthon.
I do have a question. Maybe it's just me, but I thought the Code of Ordinance for two dash four four was for an appointment. Can somebody explain to me what an appointment is?
I can't hear.
Maybe it's just for me. I would like the definition of an appointment by the board. I know we appointed the county administrator. We appointed our county clerk. Have we appointed a county attorney who has a contract that is just set up just like our county clerk and our county administrator? Maybe I'm confused.
Would you want me to speak to that?
Please do.
Commissioner, yes, I will. The, the contract basically says, in order for this, and, and certainly I've had an opportunity.
Madam Chair.
Can you hear me?
I would, I would just like for you to tell me what the appointment, appointment means.
The appointment means.
Not based on the contract, just appointment.
The appointment means that, uh, it says two things, an employees and also retains. And also, we don't pay our, uh, contractors or services. We don't offer them furlough days. We don't have, uh, them tied to a general fund budget. They're, you know, this, this current county attorney has a budget and is on our budget line for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or more. And the contract like MSI and DBA, we don't even look at those contracts. Those contracts don't come before the Board of Commissioners on an annual basis. This contract does not even go through purchasing. It comes through the Board of Commissioners every year with the other, uh, staff, or should I say director contracts. And this board authorizes me to sign all the directors' contract, the county administrator's contract, and also the county attorney's contract. Y'all don't authorize me to sign MSI contract or DBI, DBA. We haven't looked at those contracts in five years. All I'm doing is following this, this Code of Ordinance and looking at the body of that contract in first paragraph. Uh, certainly, I just want to make sure we just stay within the, just keep it in a fair way. We want to look at it. Can we just make sure? Because to answer your question about appointment, I can't answer that question.
Well, thank you for being honest and stating that you can't answer it.
Yes.
For the appointments that we have done, we, they are employee contracts and they are appointed for those service agreements with our current county, um, firm, which is Sherrod and Bernard. Because I don't want to just put it on one person's. It's unfair, just like it's unfair to single out a group of people that you've given raises to. So it's unfair to single out, uh, Attorney Bernard in, in this instance because it really is not about him. It is about the business of the county and handling the business accordingly. And anytime we have done a service agreement, we have always been able to bid those outs. So this procurement, um, that we did, uh, was known by this entire board. We have emails to state that. And I just want to say it for the record. This RFP was done by the books. There was nothing illegal. Everyone applied, including our current, um, county attorney, the Sherrod and Bernard, they also applied. So I think the biggest discrepancy is not whether we take who is before us or even, even who we have. The biggest discrepancy is whether this is a service agreement or this is an appointment. And maybe we need to go to court to get that squared away because ethically, we can't allow this just to continue. Either it's an appointment and the, the way that we've done appointments in the past, again, I refer to our county clerk and our county administrator, either we're going to appoint that way or this board is going to do a service, a service agreement. But you can't say that his appointment, that his tenure is an appointment. And then on one hand, the legal contract states that it is a service agreement. We have to just distinguish between those. And that's my only comment.
And I, I hope, thank you, you're, you're so much welcome, Commissioner Carthon. And at the pleasure of this board, I would love an external, uh, outside, uh, counsel to look at it, an attorney to, to give us, because I need an answer as well, a service agreement versus a contract. But we want to make sure that we do it right. One thing I'm going to make clear, and I kind of made it clear, and I'm going to continue to make clear. I'm laying on that firewall of that ordinance, the Code of Ordinance. And when we get past that, whatever, the way everything, wherever the chips fall, that's just where they fall. But right now, I want to state, I'm going to keep it in a fair way. I appreciate the Vice Chair, so we just want to table that. I want to make sure we dot every i, cross every t, because I'm a citizen of this county too. And I don't want to be involved in a litigious situation where we didn't dot every i as this board and cross every t. We are a body. And thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. I've learned from Commissioner Mitchell, this is a body. Madam Chair, don't have to say so or do anything. We are a body. And right now, the hip is hurting and I don't know which way we're going. So I'm going to wait until we do something. So let's just table it. I think that's the noble thing to do so we can get some advice. I appreciate your concern about whether this is a service agreement and a contract. We can go back and forth all day, but I can't give you a real intelligent answer, I'll be honest with you. So Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to table this, do we?
So as a point of action, um, if it's, um, the consensus of the board to give this assignment to the county administrator to engage, um, um, an outside firm to get the question answered, um, or, I mean, as a first point of order, um, I think that's, that's, that's important. It cannot stand indefinitely. Because if it was legal and standing, then we're, 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 for every day after September first, um, our county attorney, or the existing incumbent, is that, that contract is ending. What we don't want to be is four months from now and we have no county attorney and we did not hire a new one, no matter how we got there. Let's not lose sight of that. Well, you still have a contract. So while we trying to figure out, while we trying to learn on the job, you have a contract that's live and it has meaning. And it, it doesn't get circumvented or invalidated or marginalized, or I don't see it. You got a little, so I'm just saying for the record. So if everybody agrees, Madam Chair, let you say to the county administrator that we, we are authorizing her to go and find out the answer. Uh, and then we'll come back to this, um, as some soon date certain, um, you know, as swiftly as possible. That's all we can say. I yield.
County Administrator, did you hear that? But, but as of, did you hear what I said? Did you, did you get the marching orders?
Yes, as long as it's all over.
Okay, thank you. And with that being said, as of today, at this particular moment, um, right now, uh, the county attorney, legal general counsel for this county is still the same. No, there are no changes to the letter that was sent by, again, our purchasing director meant absolutely nothing. It has no weight on it. Again, what I'm not going to do is compromise the staff. I don't need them to shield me. This is for the board to do. We got to stand up, do the noble thing. As my father would say, man up and get up here and vote and decide which way we want to go. But that's something between this board, so we don't want to talk about that today. We can do it later. But we're going to just, uh, certainly I have a table, uh, it's on the, um, right now, a motion. Okay, it's on the table, to table. So with, Board of Commissioners, we have a motion and a second to table.
I would like to amend your motion to include that, um, we would table, but also table until the last meeting in, um, October. That will give our county administrator enough time to, uh, get an answer in regards to our questions between appointment and service agreement as opposed to indefinitely. I cannot favor tabling this indefinitely. We need to act accordingly upon this. So I make a motion that we revisit this, um, by our last, um, BOC meeting in October.
Clerk, when is that last meeting? In October? And if we get the information before October, uh, Board of Commissioners, I'll make sure I provide that with you. Okay, I'll make sure I provide that information to you. So I just want to let you know if we receive that information earliest. So I don't want to put a deadline. We're just putting a firewall up. Certainly, um, what is the date, Lisa?
October nineteenth.
October nineteenth, okay. Anybody want a second? Well, you say you have a second? Okay. So I got two things on the floor now.
So you have to vote on the.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, we have a motion on the floor and a second to amend, uh, the.
Madam Chair, not to interrupt, just simply, you already had a motion on the table. The first one needs to be withdrawn if you're considering the second one or the second motion becomes an amendment to the first, just for pur- a purpose of parliamentary procedure.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, what I'm going to do is just, I'm going to wrap the two together, Ken. Is that okay? Can I just, just kind of change? I'm just going to wrap it together. Board of Commissioners, right now, we have a motion on the floor to table, uh, this topic until, I said, an indefinite date, but we said that we changed the date to October the nineteenth. So do we have a motion to do that, to just go from tabling this item to October nineteenth?
No, Madam Chair. If, if you're going to do it that way, then you need to kind of get everybody to rescind, come back and then start over with a fresh motion.
All right. Jesus. Okay, Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion?
You got to get, just, either you can, you can take it and run with it or you got to get everybody who, who already made the, the, the next motion with your motion, will you guys rescind your motions and start a fresh motion out like you said what you want to do?
Okay, Board of Commissioners, I would like to resc-
Yeah, I pick up, yeah, I pick it up. It's resented.
You're going to take it up as amendment, ta- first take up the amendment first?
Y'all want me to just rescind it?
Just pick it up.
Okay.
And I rescind my second to your motion.
Okay, now let me do, now I can start over. Board of Commissioners, I would like to make a motion to, uh.
Madam Chair, you got to rescind yours.
To rescind?
Yeah, your, your motion.
My motion.
Right.
Initially made to table the, uh, this item until indefinitely.
I rescind my second.
Okay.
Now, let's go.
Thank you. Board of Commissioners, I would like to make a motion to table this item until October nineteenth is our deadline to provide information regarding whether this item is a, uh, con- service agreement or a contract. Do we have a motion? I mean, do we?
No, no, a service agreement, no. Your words mean something here.
Service agreement or? To determine whether this is actually a service agreement. So I just made a motion. Do I have a second?
To table, second.
To table, yes, okay, we have a motion and a second. As stated, we have a motion and a second and discussion.
I just, just so we can make sure, because I think this, you, you made a motion. Are we tabling this or we, for a particular date, to find out whether or not it is going to be, is it a?
It's part of the motion.
Or, um, help me out. Or appointment.
Service or appointment.
So, so that we, as Vice Chairman Robinson stated, we got to make sure that all of our, these words mean something. Because if you don't, then we're going to have ourselves back here again trying to figure out what we just tried, that we confused everybody else with.
Got you. Service agreement or appointment. That's correct. Lisa, for the record.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And then, second from Robinson, Vice Chairman Robinson. Okay, and we have no discussion? I'm assuming no more?
Yes, just one discussion.
Yours.
If, if, um, Lisa would kind of.
If, if Lisa would kind of restate the motion, so for the general public, and everybody will know exactly what this is, or even Ken, it doesn't matter, just somebody that, make sure they clearly make the correct motion of what this is.
Yes, sir. The motion was to table this item until October 19th in order for the county administrator to find out if this is a service or appointment.
Okay. Any other discussion, Board? I just wanted to say one thing before we, you need this for the record. Whether it's, if, whether it's a service agreement or appointment, what impact does it have on Code of Ordinance 2-44? What does that mean in terms of the law? So, I just need to make sure I said that for the record. So, all right, we have a motion and a second, Board.
I got it, one more.
Okay, there you go.
No, just, and again, we don't want to make this so, so narrow, though, that it's a yes or no. So, county administrator, I mean, I'm not trying to, it can't just be, is this or not? Right? So, you need a real legal opinion around this matter. This is not just a, is this an agreement or not? Right? It has to, it has to be settled in a way of, so that, but we gotta give you independence to go and do what you have to do, and have a real legal opinion to look at both sides of this argument, on what, you know, and take the position. And it's like, okay, because you got different lawyers that are applying different points to the law. That's what I'm saying. Madam Chair, you're pointing one thing, but there's plenty of attorneys saying, well, they're forgetting this, and they're forgetting this, and they're forgetting this. Let's not be naive.
Right.
Let the county administrator go and come back with a formal legal opinion regarding this, but I want to be careful, we're not just saying, go tell me if this is a agreement or not, because you have an existing contract that's live, that's live, that has terms. And we have exposure to this thing. If in fact, we get to a place where, okay, it was legit, therefore, what you did was legit, therefore, oh, shoot. It's the end of the year, now you don't have any transition, now you subject to being held hostage, because now you, all your stuff. This has to go fast. Right? So, we're, it's like, no, it's live. This ain't just, we just gonna figure this out to the side, like, so I gotta emphasize that. So, I'm good. I just had to put that point out there, that county administrator, you hear us, and it's on you, and you gotta be willing, you have to have the authority to be able to go, but you have to go and get a formal legal opinion regarding this, and it is what it is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair? May I have the floor? County Administrator, just want to make sure that we understand, that we know you understand that you are going to find out the legal opinion regarding appointment and the service agreement, and whether or not the service agreement is egregious, or not egregious, or within the bounds of what we as county government has. So, it's looking at the contract, but it's also letting us know if this is enforceable, if this is correct, if this is ethical, and if this board can actually press forward with agreements like this. So, this, this will really help us, really, to do two things, to know whether or not this is an appointment or a service agreement, but to also help us moving forward as we craft other service agreements, whether with the county attorney, or any other professional service that comes before us. We as a board need to know that. Are you, are you clear?
I am clear.
And, County Administrator, when you meet with --
And I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay, when you receive legal opinion, I want you to make sure that you have that charter with you, 2.2-44, and also take that, take his contract with you, so we're not winging and being emotional. I want to make sure that we take the right information there, because I want us to either, we need to clean this up. So, I'm hoping and very optimistic we will. And I appreciate you, Vice Chairman, saying not make it so specific. It needs to be very broad. We're looking at a legal opinion, and that's what we're gonna look at. We're not looking at whether it's this or that. We need to make a legal opinion. And so, that allows this board, that gives us some direction in which way to move. Again, I told, I mentioned earlier that we do not want any disputatious consequences for this county or for this board. So, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of tabling as stated, please raise your right hand. We have a 5-0 unanimous vote to table this item, and the motion carries. Thank you, Board of Commissioners. Board of Commissioners, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda is, certainly, we had an opportunity to review our consent agenda yesterday, and certainly, I ask that you --
Chair, can you please tell them thank you?
Okay, we want to take a five-minute break, but let me do this first. I want to certainly thank, and as I did yesterday, I thanked and certainly apologized to Thompson Heine, LLP, for certainly the hiccup on our end, and should I say, we fumbled the ball on the one-yard line, and I apologize for that. And let me take my mask off, so you can see that I am very sincere. I'm not hiding behind the veil. I just wanted to say that I respect your services and appreciate you coming in, but I want to make sure that I certainly do my due diligence as the chairman of this county, and protect this county, and making sure, make sure that we stay within the policies and the ordinances and the laws that's been set by previous folks that came before me, and a lot of it is done at the state level. And you're an attorney, and attorneys know the law. So, I want to make sure that we're respectful to that point, and I appreciate you all coming in, and I'm just not sure. This is my first time actually meeting you, had no idea who you were, but you could come up and say hello. You know, respectfully, I'll do that. Certainly don't want to just be disrespectful. And are you Mr. Thompson or Heine? I see it's Heine Thompson.
My name is Thompson Heine.
Thompson Heine, okay.
My name's Michael Coleman.
Michael Coleman, okay.
I'm a partner at the firm Thompson Heine. I'm joined by my colleague, the honorable Aaron Watson.
Senior Counsel.
We're happy to have the opportunity to come and introduce ourselves to you. We certainly respect your need and diligence in making sure that you are complying with your rules and regs, and we look forward to the opportunity to visit with you again at some point in the future, and to meet all of you individually, personally, at some point in the future. And one, and while you have apologized profusely for having us sit down yesterday and today, it certainly gave us an opportunity to learn a lot about the county and what's going on in the county.
Know what you signed it up for.
So, you know, there's a civil lining to everything. Thank you so much.
And I did my best to keep it in the fair way. Thank you all for taking your time to come, taking the time to come out. We really appreciate you. All right, Board of Commissioners, I've been asked by one of our commissioners, and I'm gonna respectfully just ask if we could take a five-minute recess, and then I'll read the consent agenda. We've been sitting here quite a while, so I know you may want to have a, take the time to get some water or a bathroom break, so. We're gonna, five minutes. Clerk, can you start timing us at five minutes? Just set the timer.
You done it?
Yes. Are we, are we ready, Board? I'm, we're missing one of our members.
Missing him and the attorney.
Okay. And the attorney. Lisa, can you --
Yes, ma'am. Fine, attorney and also --
Commissioner Mitchell? If you could, if you, please. This big --
She brought us one, but thank you.
Intermissions. Nobody calls back.
Yeah, we're virtual tonight.
Yes. You, you can't. Someone want to call Commissioner Mitchell?
We should be ready momentarily. I'm waiting on Commissioner Mitchell and our county attorney. Sorry about that, Commissioner Carthen. I got tangled up in a long fight. You said rescind, I said, look, I'm, oh, so you do it.
I kept telling you to rescind, but you was like, no. He said, no. I said, okay.
All right. Had a quick recess, and we are back live and ready to go. Board of Commissioners, we were at the point of our consent agenda, and certainly, Rick Martin, you will, are we ready? I just want to make sure before I start. Okay, thank you. Board of Commissioners, appreciate you taking time, just a little small mini recess, and we are back. We are actually, we were at the point of our, the consent agenda, and just remember, Board of Commissioners, all items are subject to final legal review. And certainly, if, we had an opportunity yesterday, and we made a commitment to one another, we've spent an enormous amount of time yesterday discussing all the items on the consent agenda, which is Tab 11 through 21. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve as printed?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? We have a motion and a second, Board of Commissioners. Please prepare to cast your votes.
Chair, the motion carries, 5-0.
Board of Commissioners, we have a 5-0 unanimous vote regarding the consent agenda, and the motion carries. Thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, that leads us into the next phase, which is our announcements. Board of Commissioners, do you have any announcements that you would like to discuss with our citizens before I call on our communications director, Rick Martin? Rick Martin, you have the floor to announce what's coming forth for the Board of Commissioners, and also for the citizens of Douglas County.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Again, Board of Commissioners and staff, District 1 Commissioner Mitchell cordially invites the public to his coffee and conversation happening September 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Vine Cafe. Commissioner Carthen? Commissioner Carthen's event on behalf of District 3 Commissioner Terania Carthen. The Mobile Mammogram Unit will return to the Douglas County Courthouse on Tuesday, September 28th, for employees and the public. All individuals interested in a screening must register using the link on the flyer that is on the website. You're encouraged to sign. that is on the website, uh, you're encouraged to sign up as soon as possible, space is limited, no walk-ins will be accepted. If you have any questions regarding the event, please contact mammosaves.com at 678-626-0342, that's 678-626-0342. The Douglas County Small Business Grant Program is now accepting applications from Douglas County small businesses for $2,500 grant. To apply, you're encouraged to visit elizabethbaptist.org, or for more information, email T. Stewart Stanley at co.douglas.ga.us. September Saturdays, the 19th Annual September Saturdays Festival Celebration, presented by Georgia's Own Credit Union, will now be held virtually instead of the traditional way of in-person here at the courthouse, in an effort to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. The Douglas County Communications through the Board of Commissioners will produce two special programs. The first one will air on September, September 18th, honoring our heroes and first responders, and the second program will air on September 25th, honoring our community. The shows will air on Douglas County's Government Access Channel, DCTV-23, and its social media platforms. Please be on the lookout for more information, such as the times of when they'll air, on celebratedouglascounty.com. Keep Douglas County beautiful, WSA and the Douglas County Master Gardeners will be hosting the 2021 Rivers Alive Cleanup on Saturday, September 4th, at 9:00 a.m., here at the Nature Trails at the Douglas County Courthouse, 8700 Hospital Drive. For more information, please email to Bria Cobb, T-A-B as in boy, R-I-E-A-H-C-O-B-B, at co.douglas.ga.us. Again, we wanna remind the public that free COVID-19 testing is being offered at Deer Lake Park Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information, you can visit douglasvillecovid.com. For COVID-19 information, you can call the COVID-19 Call Center at 1-833-974-3366, that's That concludes the announcements for today, I yield back to you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Communications Director Rick Martin. Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
I do, thank you, Madam Chair, just wanna invite, uh, you know, we're back to our coffee and conversations this Saturday, that'll be September 4th at The Vines, that's 12 375 Veterans Memorial or Broad Street in downtown Douglasville, so, uh, we start about 10 o'clock and about 12:00 noon, once again, uh, The Vine Cafe, um, we've had great attendance on the last one, that we've now started back getting out in the community doing the coffee and conversations. Just always remember, I provide the coffee, you provide the conversations, and the conversations are getting, becoming very interesting, and, uh, I just appreciate those who make it out, it's, if you wanna come, it doesn't matter if you're in District One or District Four, you could, you're, if you're able and wanna come out and have a conversation about what's going on within the community of Douglas County, you're more than welcome to come. Once again, The Vines Cafe, 12 375 Veterans Memorial or Broad Street in downtown Douglasville, this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon, join us, and, uh, I've got the coffee, you've got the conversation, thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Well, I'll just close by saying what I typically say regarding this, uh, virus, uh, just ask our citizens if they could just remain vigilant with, uh, Delta, the Delta variant, and certainly I've heard that Lambda is on its way, uh, and I want to remind you to please, uh, just keep taking very strong measures to wear your mask in a confined space, and just wear your mask, period, when you're in a public space, wash your hands repeatedly throughout the day, and watch your social dis- distancing. We do have, um, vaccines, um, available throughout the county, our drugstores, our pharmacists, should I say pharmacies, and also, uh, through our Douglas County Public Health Department, are administering vaccines, and also we have some testing centers that have just popped up recently, we have a testing center at Deer Lake Park, and then also we are testing at our senior center on Fairburn Road on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I believe from 8 to 1, um, that, I have an article that was in the Chapel Hill News and Views, it hit yesterday, actually, I saw the article dropped in my subdivision yesterday, and I spoke again about the coronavirus, uh, again, I said, if we take this virus lightly, it will take us, and I'm sincere about that, and I, I did mention to the citizens, I made a statement in my, uh, editorial, that I said, if, I would love to write about something fun, I, I've had some fun moments, but every time I try to think that it's almost over, then something else pops up, a new Delta variant, so, I just want to, to just remind you that education is key, and this Board of Commissioners is, uh, committed to educating our citizens about this virus, so that's why I'm taking the time to just, I know it sound like a broken record, but it's been 18 months long, it's, uh, certainly, I promised, I said earlier, it was a marathon, but I don't know, this may be a tri, what is it, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Robinson, after the marathon, what is it, a triathlon? I don't know, because we just run, I, I, I don't wanna make any promises, but, uh, this is a, a race that I don't see the finish line in sight, so I'm asking our citizens, please, to remain diligent. Board of Commissioners, if that's, uh, if there's nothing else to come before this body, we will go into recess until 6:00 p.m., we have a plan and a zoning meeting today, and we will return, uh, virtually, citizens, you will, you will see us return virtually, uh, as a result of this pandemic, we're trying to stay as safe as possible, thank you.
Yeah, virtually, thank you.
All right, thank you.